Welcome to our Tacoma Park City Council meeting this week. I'd like to call the session into order and ask the clerk to call the role.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Here.
Thank you very much. Before we begin our meeting tonight, I'd like to extend our sympathies and to let folks in the Asian American community know that we stand in mourning together with them based on the atrocities that happened in Georgia. We know that over the last year, hate incidents against the Asian American community have been on a rise and we just want to extend our sympathies. And I think we just take a moment of silence. Thank you, and if anyone in our community needs assistance or anything, please reach out to us, to our police department or city manager's office. We are here to assist you during this time. Looking at our agenda moving forward, next week is March 24th. We begin our meeting with a briefing on the minor master plan process and memorandum agreement between Montgomery County Planning Board and the city of Tacoma Park. This is for the area that is around Washington Adventist University, the former site of Washington Adventist Hospital up Maple Avenue to the community center. In addition, we have our voting session next week. We have the second reading ordinance amending the stormwater management code. And tentatively, we have first reading ordinance approving an FY21 budget amendment number five. Our work sessions next week include a code enforcement update, a pre-budget briefing on vehicle replacements, technology and recreation department plans, and preparations for redistricting. On Wednesday, March 31st, we will not have a council meeting that evening. So then our next meeting will be on April 7th. We will begin that meeting with the presentation of the city manager by the city manager of the FY2022 recommended budget. Our voting items that night will be tentatively second reading ordinance approving the FY21 budget amendment number five. Our work sessions that night will be a continued discussion of committees and update on the city manager search and update on the reimagining public safety task force. Then on Wednesday, April 14th, so far scheduled, we have a public hearing on the FY2022 recommended budget. And starting on Monday evening, April 19th, the city council will be meeting in budget work sessions on Mondays in addition to our regular meetings on Wednesdays. As always, if you need to check our agenda, that is available on the city website. Now, we have this evening a proclamation for Meat Out Day, which is March 20th. I will read this. Whereas the city of Tacoma Park has adopted a goal to move rapidly toward net zero greenhouse gas emissions citywide and is working to fight global warming, which includes the goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, promoting technology, reducing air pollution, conserving water and more. And whereas a plant-based diet helps protect the environment by reducing our carbon footprint, preserving forests, grasslands and wildlife habitats, and reduces pollution of waterways. And whereas an estimated 1,800 to 2,500 gallons of water go into producing a single pound of beef. And whereas the United Nations recognizes that livestock are one of the most significant contributors to today's most serious environmental problems. And whereas the American Dietetic Association recognizes that reduced meat consumption decreases the risk of various health problems, stating scientific data suggests positive relationships between a vegetarian diet and reduced risk for severe chronic degenerative diseases and conditions, including obesity, hypertension, diabetes and some types of cancer. And whereas a growing number of people are reducing their meat consumption to protect their health and the environment as well as to help prevent animal cruelty. And whereas colleges and universities nationwide have added meatless Monday menus in their cafeterias. And whereas since Meat Out was launched in 1985, more than 35 million Americans have explored a plant-based diet and reduce their consumption of meat, dairy and eggs, and major food manufacturers and national franchises are marketing more meat-free options in response to this growing demand. Now therefore, I Kate Stewart, Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, do hereby pronounce May 20th, 2021 as Meat Out Day. Encourage all residents to consider the benefits of plant-based food to their health, to animals and to the environment. Thank you. Next, we will see, was Ann able to join us this evening? Ann is with us, so we will turn it over to her for an update on what's going on in Annapolis.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. There's a lot going on. The House is on the floor right now, voting on a lot of things. We're approaching what's called crossover next Monday, when House bills have to be in the Senate and Senate bills have to be in the House. And there's a lot of voting going on this week. And so it's just trying to watch online number of committees at the same time. The interesting thing is this is the first year we've been able to do that. It's voting sessions aren't always, they're legally open to the public, but they're not always welcoming. So it's been really wonderful to be able to see a lot of the voting sessions. There's some very good stuff going on with some of the priorities for the city related to the environment. The Community Choice Energy Bill has passed the House. It's now in the Senate. It has a hearing next week. And there is progress going on with the stormwater management bill and the large climate, climate solutions, climate change solutions bill. On transportation, the speed limit bill that is a county bill has passed the House. It's in the Senate. And we are right now trying to figure out if and how it can be amended to allow Tacoma Park and other municipalities to have authority related to the streets and city limits. So we are working with Senator Smith on trying to figure out what we're able to do, if anything, this year on this bill. So we're continuing to work on that. And then there's a whole lot going on right now related to a number of housing bills. And there've been a slew of bills aimed at some significant, some small reforms to how the summary ejectment process works, how eviction works. And then there has also been an emergency bill that in the House is sponsored by Delegate Janelle Wilkins and in the Senate is sponsored by Senator Will Smith that is meant to be a, you know, an immediate response to this pandemic and then future, any future emergencies as well. And the House bill was stripped down significantly to a point where it mostly just codifies the existing limitations on evictions under the governor's orders. Keeping in mind that those orders, as well as the orders from the CDC, do not fully prevent evictions. They prevent evictions in failure to pay rent cases, but not in cases where where a lease is expired and a tenant wants to renew, but the landlord doesn't. So one of the big problems we're trying to deal with as well is that there's a lot of, thankfully, there's a lot of federal aid that's coming specifically for rental assistance. This is money that goes directly to landlords. And the problem being that the money so far has not, at a state level, it has not come with any requirements for landlords to, after getting the back rent paid, for example, going ahead and still evicting the tenant the next month or not renewing the lease the next month. So we're working on how we might be able to, you know, create some incentives for landlords who take some of the emergency assistance money to be able to help keep people housed for, you know, certainly as long as we possibly can and really avoid a tsunami of evictions that we are expecting as the courts have just opened up this week. So that's really, I think, one of the main outstanding issues right now that we're trying to make some progress on in Annapolis.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, Rand? Okay, well, I guess you get to go back to listen to hearings. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Terrific. We'll now move on to public comments. We did not have public comments on any of our voting items tonight. But we had three residents sign up for public comments generally. I'm checking with the city clerk. I think, will we go to do Ms. Landman first or Tracy Dibala?
It looks like Ms. Landman has her camera on, so we could start.
All right, Ms. Landman, you're up.
I'd like to share my screen. Can you do that before you start the clock, Jesse?
Sorry. If you need to share your screen, we would have needed to have had advance notice of apologies.
I did, I sent her a note, but perhaps it didn't reach her in time. All right, could you please start the clock again? I will. Okay, so the reason that I'm here this evening is to comment on something that was said during the city manager's comments last week regarding safety at the Tacoma Junction. It came up during the status report on the proposed development. I think her comments were not accurate and that record needs to be corrected because you are soon going to be voting on whether the NDC design meets the requirements that you set out in your 2018 resolution. The city manager said that the only safe design for the junction was the use of a lay-by. She posted a Q and A on the city's website elaborating on this point, and I will send you the quotation from that in which she said, since I can't show you on PowerPoint, that a lay-by on Carroll Avenue is the only option that has been found to meet delivery design standards. And this is simply not accurate. In fact, the proposed lay-by design that has been submitted by the developers has not been found to be safe. On the contrary, the Montgomery County Department of Transportation has said that they do not support that lay-by design because it is unsafe and it violates existing county traffic laws about putting such a parking space so close to a crosswalk, to a traffic light and to an intersection. All three are disallowed under county regulations. So far, the SHA has not submitted their opinion, but we expect that shortly. Ms. Ludlow claimed, and I quote, "Trucks regularly and illegally cross the double yellow line to enter and exit," unquote, "from the city's parking lot, which is of course used by the co-op and all the other merchants in the neighborhood, and cars do the same." "While we checked the traffic rules, and it is not illegal to cross a center double yellow line so long as it is done non-negligently. Of course, unsafe driving should be enforced against for all drivers, but it is not true that crossing a double yellow is illegal. Furthermore, there are innumerable instances in Tacoma Park where this occurs, even elsewhere on the same roadway. And there is a double yellow line on the new Flower Avenue street that must be crossed by all sorts of vehicles going in and out of driveways, and the city just oversaw the installation with no concerns expressed about it there. I believe that this newly minted argument about the use of the current parking lot being unsafe and the supposed safety of the lay-by design, which is directly contradicted by the county safety experts who have opined, is a clear example of why you cannot have the same party. In this instance, the city manager, be both the champion and the technical reviewer for this project, which is something that she has claimed it is her rule to do, role to do. You need a different system for getting objective input for technical review. This is only one such example. I could cite you several others from that Q and A that was posted, but I feel it's necessary to correct the record regarding the safety of the proposed lay-by. Thank you. And I will send you the PowerPoint that I would have shared this evening had I been able to share my screen.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Landman. Mr. Dibala, you're up.
Hi. I did not know that Jessica was going to, I did not know that Jessica was going to make her presentation. I was disappointed to read the city manager's comments about the junction in last week's Tacoma Insider. It seemed to represent unbalanced advocacy when, as I understand it, she is responsible for providing a balanced technical analysis of the project that the council can use to make decisions. First, she says the lay-by is the only delivery option possible for the co-op that would meet safety standards. But MC Department of Transportation doesn't support the lay-by because of safety concerns, among other reasons. Maybe there's no safe option on the table, including the lay-by. That might be a balanced conclusion. More importantly, the city manager claims that not approving the project will result in hardships for the city and the neighborhood. She doesn't specify any of these hardships. So I followed her link to the city's page and found a couple of vague and conjectural things. But I couldn't find anything that cast a negative light on the project, and specifically this proposal. So let me list some hardships that the current proposal would create, all of which run counter to the council's resolutions. Local businesses would be endangered because of years of construction and the complete loss of the current parking lot. There would be a loud, ugly garage next to a residential area. Noise from the back doors of restaurants spilling into a residential area. Increased cut-through traffic on neighborhood streets. More people hunting for parking on neighborhood streets. Greater risks for pedestrians and cyclists. Even worse traffic on the major roads and the permanent loss of a significant wooded area. Shouldn't such concerns be included in the city's evaluation of the project? Or at least acknowledged? The city manager's statement doesn't even hint that these concerns exist. It unfortunately looks more like advocacy than analysis. Example of traffic illustrates this partiality. Indy's traffic study says the intersection at the junction is overburdened and that the development will make this significantly worse. It's so bad that NDC originally said that their proposal depended on the intersection being reconfigured. Moreover, political leaders here are arguing for this project on the grounds that it would fix the intersection. Now that's not going to happen. So by NDC's own analysis, bad traffic in this area will get even worse. This is inherent to the project. Surely it should be acknowledged. Undoubtedly, you'll have to weigh pros and cons as you decide whether to proceed with the current proposal, perhaps with modifications, or to send NDC back to the drawing board. So I respectfully urge you to ensure that you get a full, fair assessment from the city administration or that you seek information elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I asked the city clerk, did Ms. Machui get on this evening?
I do not see her. I don't see her. She's joined the meeting.
Council comments, and if she joins, we can come back to her. So now we'll turn to council comments. Let's see if people want to raise their hands or wave at me. First, Councilwoman Kostic.
Hello, everyone. Just a couple of updates. One is I attended the first meeting of the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force last night, and I think it was a great kickoff. Really grateful to all of the members of the task force. It was really impressive to see everyone there and their qualifications and their passion for making changes. I think this seems really, really like a good direction that we're going with having the task force and really appreciate the opportunity to be able to to join and watch last night. Also, just wanted to give a couple of updates from the Transportation Planning Board meeting today. Looking ahead, May 21st is Bike to Work Day. So whether you are literally commuting to work or teleworking, you can find a way to bike on that day, and you can register at www.biketoworkmetrodc.org. There are planned to be a number of the pit stops around the area, which are typical on Bike to Work Days. You can stop and kind of do something fun on your bike. We also had a fairly in-depth discussion as we're starting to work on the long-range transportation plan update, which is called Visualize 2045. And we talked a bit about climate change and making sure that we are doing as much as we can on it in the plan. I really appreciate over the past couple of weeks, we've heard from a number of residents in Tacoma Park and throughout the region who have concerns about climate and the long-range transportation plan for the region. Really appreciate hearing from everyone, and I'm continuing to advocate for that on the transportation planning board. I think we have a number of hurdles to get across, but hopefully we can do do some things that will ensure we have a bolder plan and can really make a little bit more of a difference on it this time around. And then finally, we also heard some travel, household travel survey data, which was very informative. It looks at travel, household travel from 2007 to 2017. So the data is from before the pandemic, but still a lot of really useful data and a lot of the data also really reveals a lot of the racial inequities in the region, which I think was really powerful testament through data to some of the work that needs to be done. And then finally, just want to let people know that next Tuesday at 7:00 PM, I will be having a Word 3 virtual meeting with the Estreitas Montessori School, which is going into the former John Evans Andrews School property at 117 Elm. And it'll be a great opportunity to learn a little more about what their plans are and ask questions. It is a Word 3 meeting, but anyone is welcome. So I, please feel free to share information with residents throughout the city. I know there's a lot of interest in finding out if there will be opportunities to enroll students in the school and also what it will look like for the neighborhood as well. So really looking forward to that meeting. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Next, Councilwoman Dibala.
Thanks. So two things, speaking of the metropolitan council governments, this Friday is the Chesapeake Bay Policy Council meeting. And there'll be a legislative wrap-up, and I'll be talking about Maryland and someone else, we talked about Virginia. But the, the main thing I wanted to mention was that, speaking of climate, I went to a, an EPA benchmarking for buildings workshop today. And I'll be sharing the slides with city council members and anybody, any resident who's interested. And it explained very clearly what you do, how you do it, who's already done it, what level of building. And I just found it really useful in thinking about how it might apply here. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar.
My apologies, technical Zoom issues. Thank you, Mayor. First, just to follow on with what Councilmember Kostic mentioned, I also had the opportunity to observe the first meeting of the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force and thought they did a good job and a nice introduction and kickoff by Councilmember Circe as well. And looking forward to the work that they'll be doing and us interacting with them. Appreciate the mayor's comments as well there and the city managers. I am hosting a Word 1 discussion, no specific topic or special guest, as Councilmember Kostic has. That will be on Thursday of next week, the 25th at 7:30 PM. And I've sent that around and will certainly send reminders, but it's through Zoom, a virtual meeting. Any topic allowed. I mentioned in the past, and I know the mayor and Ms. Ludlow and others may have joined there. The generally bi-weekly food distribution effort that's been happening at the Compaq Middle School, they skipped one week a couple of weeks ago because of an inventory with the Washington Area Food Bank. And so they had one distribution this past Saturday, and they're doing it again this Saturday to kind of catch up again to the bi-weekly. And so for anybody who's interested, this is the food distribution. There are a number of them taking place around the area. There's predates COVID, although it's much more important arguably during the pandemic. But this is hosted by the Shepherds of Zion Ministries, is at the Compaq Middle School, starting this Saturday in the morning around 7:30 or so. If you can come for part of the time for a couple of hours, you can come at 7:30 and come later, that's fine too. I had fun with 50-pound bags of potatoes this past weekend, but they're smaller things too. Two other points. The mayor mentioned in the upcoming agendas that next week we have a work session on code enforcement. And I will say for those who are watching, residents who are watching, I've heard from a number of residents have raised some questions and concerns about how some of the code enforcement work and citations that affect people's homes and whatnot, how that whole process works. And so this is an opportunity for us to dig down into some of those issues. And so I encourage anybody who has, does have questions or concerns about that to certainly if you can speak about it during the public comment period or send us notes. certainly if you can, um, speak about it during the public comment period or send us notes or whatever, but I appreciate the mayor, uh, scheduling that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that I understand the, um, one of the committees in the county council, um, approved and is working to move forward on a revision to the cell tower zoning proposal that, that they're working on, that this one is, uh, I think, a further intrusion into how, in terms of how close towers could potentially be in residential areas. And I haven't had the chance to look at it myself yet and, and, uh, review it, but, um, if it looks like that's going to be moving forward, I, I'd like to suggest that we really take a close look at it and, and appropriate express our concern about that because as I understand the proposal, it could involve, uh, cell towers being placed even closer than 30 feet to residences, which I don't think is something that, that we want, and I think would run counter to what we were trying to do in our own cell tower ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Councilwoman Cersei.
Hey, good evening, everyone. A couple of quick updates. Uh, so I was at the, um, Reimagining Public Safety Task Force meeting last night. Um, and I just want to give a, a special shout out to, um, city staff, um, deputy city manager, um, Jessica Clark and the city manager, as well as, um, various staff that have called together, the chief called together lots of information to provide to the task force. And I actually felt like we did a good job. And people said, whoa, you gave us a lot of information, right? Um, so that just is a testament to our desire to be as transparent as possible. Also want to thank our contractors, um, Link and Expected Advisory. Just, you know, the way in which they were able to facilitate that conversation, um, and the way in which they will be able to facilitate future conversations, I think is, it's going to be extremely helpful, um, to navigate some difficult conversations. Um, and then lastly, and definitely not least, all of those that, um, are participants of the task force, you know, not only being willing to, um, give of your time, your professional expertise, but also willing to be brave enough to, um, state what you think and your opinions and ways in which we can shape public safety in the city. It's, it's, um, something that is really important, um, but it's also, um, something that can be scary to kind of talk about some of these really touchy issues in an open forum. So I just want to thank everyone, um, for, um, last night.
Um, Councilwoman Cersei, I think you accidentally muted yourself.
That's what I get for like fishing from my notes. So this weekend, um, had an opportunity, um, to get vaccinated, COVID vaccination. Um, I want to, uh, thank, um, uh, our city staff, um, but also CCI and Dr. Sonia Burton. So for folks who, who don't know, CCI is one of the only, um, health centers, um, in Montgomery County that is able to do some of the vaccinations. Um, and so they started with their, um, their patient population. And, and I want to thank city staff for, um, working with them to make sure that they're able to have the space that they need in order to do, um, vaccinations at the level in which they needed to. And I think this is going to be a really important relationship for us to continue to build. Um, to make sure that we're able to have, um, vaccinations available, um, in the city through, especially for those, um, individuals in our community who need it the most. It was great to see so many, you know, city of Tacoma Park people. People of color who were in line or facilitating the line to get vaccinated. So just want to thank so much, um, city staff as well as CCI for your work on that. Um, and I think, last but not least, I want to remind people about a couple of initiatives that are still ongoing. One, um, we still have our rec center survey. So want to remind people, complete your rec center survey, complete your rec center survey. You cannot complain if you don't fill out the survey, right? So we need everyone's feedback, um, so that it will help, um, our consultants, Brooke and Story, really piece together what the needs and the wants of our community are. It will definitely help to inform, um, steps forward in terms of the development process. So if you want to have a say, this, these are the critical points in the process, um, that we need your feedback. So I want to encourage people to complete the survey. Um, and then the last thing, um, is to just remind people about Feed the Fridge. I, uh, while I was at the rec center for the vaccination, I noticed that Feed the Fridge, the fridge was empty, which I am, one, um, happy about because that means that people are taking advantage of, um, what's available. But it's also sad because we have so many people in our community that are in need of food. So, um, definitely want to reiterate our appreciation for, um, the work that's been done for the Feed the Fridge program, um, because it is being used in our community. Um, I also had an opportunity to, um, speak with folks who were doing food distributions at Hampshire Towers on, on Sunday as well, and I want to give a special shout out to Small Things Matter for your continued, um, food distribution at Hampshire Towers Apartments. So, um, again, there's been, uh, there was a lot of stuff that happened this weekend. Um, and I want to thank all of the folks that play a role in making sure that people in our community get what they need when they need it. So thanks again. Bye.
Great, thank you. Um, okay. Sorry, I thought I saw, we lost Councilmember Smith there for a minute. Um, uh, okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. Do a quick update, uh, just to piggyback on what Councilwoman, uh, Cersei just said, just about, um, CCI using the rec center. I do want to thank the staff, um, in particular, um, our city manager, WC manager and our police chief. When CCI first contacted, um, Jessica and myself, they thought they were going to vaccinate 200 of their patients on Sunday. They vaccinated almost 1,000 people. So Sunday morning was a real interesting morning for many of us. Um, and I just want to thank Doris Duarte, who, as she always does, um, jumps in and helps out, was directing traffic. And I just want to extend a huge thanks to all the residents of Hampshire Towers and the Overlook for their patients. And to promise to you that the next time we do vaccines at the rec center, we will be prepared for more people. And, and do a better job, but that is so important, as Councilwoman Cersei said, that, um, people were able to get vaccinated. And the fact that nearly 1,000 people were vaccinated just on Sunday. So I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but thank you so much for your patience and thank you, Doris. Um, I also want to thank the Village of Tacoma Park, um, who helped to, um, sign people up for vaccinations, um, at Victory Towers. And so, um, it looks like there are more, um, vaccine appointments being opened up. But if people are still having difficulty signing up, um, or calling, um, please contact your council member or myself. There are a lot of people out there who are providing assistance and we want to make sure, uh, people are getting vaccinated. Let's see, uh, the other thing is on, yesterday, I think it was, I don't know, days run together. I was on a panel for, uh, Sustainable, Sustainable Maryland Leadership Training on Equitable Engagement. And I want to just thank, um, Sustainable Maryland for inviting the city, um, to participate in that. Um, and it was also great because four of our city staff were actually doing the training, um, yesterday. So that was great. And then finally, even though it got a bit cold the last couple of days, spring is coming, uh, and is in the air. And we are less than a month away from the Crossroads Farmers Market from opening up. I'm so excited. Please be aware that there are new hours this year. It will be from 10:30 AM to 2:30 PM. So, uh, be aware of that. Um, and then thank you, Councilmember Kovar, for raising the, um, cell tower ZTA. I am, as many of you are tracking that, and I do know the, um, county executive is also looking closely at that. And working on that issue. So, uh, we're, we're going to keep an eye on that one. I think that's all I have, and I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you very much. Pick back up on the topic of, uh, COVID-19 and vaccinations. Vaccination appointments are opening up faster than ever. We're actually managing to move a little faster on getting our staff vaccinated. So that's good. It's been a, it seems like it's pulling really hard to get there, but we're getting close. Please refer to the Maryland Vaccine Website and the Montgomery County Vaccine Information Website to get more information, to, to pre-register. You can also call both the state and the county. And I will speak from personal experience that calling the state number sometimes is a better way than, than going online. Um, we're going to open up our basketball courts, or we have opened up our basketball courts, two that we closed during the, at the beginning of the pandemic. Uh, one at Spring Park and one at the Community Center. Um, doing it with a little bit of trepidation because playing basketball as a game remains a high-hazard sport, um, in the, in the way that the CDC evaluates activities during the pandemic. However, so I urge people to practice, play horse, do things that aren't, uh, large crowds, always wear your mask. Uh, we'll be monitoring, uh, the situation, but I do hope that it's a great way to get some exercise. Um, and I definitely need to practice my shooting skills. So looking forward to getting back out there. Um, we still are doing COVID testing every Saturday at the rec center. Um, and please look at the Montgomery County Testing, uh, website, um, if you, uh, do need to get a test. Our COVID-19 dashboard is updated weekly. We have new information both on cases and vaccination rates. Um, it's sad to report that two more residents of 20912 passed away this past week. And, um, we just need to get those vaccinations. We need to keep the masks on. And, and I know that it's just not going to work for everybody and we're just, um, praying for everyone that, that we get through this pandemic. Um, as we're thinking about getting through the pandemic, the schools have reopened for some, uh, some students, um, uh, in school classes. Um, I did tweet out a picture of Ms. Doris Rogers, one of our crossing guards. Uh, we are going to really celebrate in September when she hits her 50th anniversary with the city of Tacoma Park. I, this is just amazing to me. Anyway, we do want to begin offering our before and after-school care, some of our classes, preparing for summer camps. And our rec staff has been working really hard. Um, at this point, we're trying to get everybody vaccinated. We are aiming for a start date of April 12th. Um, and so we are going to be getting out the information. We've been keeping people who've signed up in the past in the loop, but we're, we're narrowing down, um, how to register, how to, um, get service. And we're hoping to be able to, um, also just expand the location. So it's, it's a work in progress, but April 12th looks like the first day that we'll be able to, um, provide some childcare services. Want to note that we sent a tax duplication letter to the county council every, every year during council, uh, the county budget time. We're making one more pitch to get fair tax duplication payments to the city of Tacoma Park. I do think that in, in some respects, we've made a little bit of progress, that, that the number shouldn't just be frozen. Unfortunately, the amount that, um, was allocated in the county executive's proposed budget, uh, is really quite small. Um, and does not get even to the full amount of the road transportation plus police money that, uh, we had hoped would be in there. There was a, a statement, well, maybe they can phase it in over two years. This is the year to do it. This is the year that it needs to be right. Um, not only does the county, is the county getting more income tax revenue this year than they've ever gotten, but there's these other funds that are coming from the federal government that can help address the needs that they've always cared about. And we appreciate, uh, for the folks who need, um, housing and other kinds of funds. But this is the year to do it. And so we do have posted on the website, the letter sent to the county council members that has a lot of background information for people that they can look at. We'll be, um, putting out some more talking points so that people can know what kind of communication to make. And we do have a meeting, the, uh, the chapter, Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League has a meeting with the county council tomorrow, and I'll be at that. And finally, um, we do have an agreement with, uh, Adventist Healthcare to use the top floor of a small building on the hospital campus at no charge for at least this calendar year and perhaps, um, for some time after that. And we intend to use it for some library services. The, um, we, we can store books there. We can have, um, space for people to come in and use computers. Um, we can do books to go out of it. Uh, we can also do services elsewhere in the city, like at the rec center. But this is really great to have a location that's at no charge for us. There's a small portion of that site, um, that will be used by the Clifford Park Baptist Church. And they're going to be growing aeroponic produce. I had said hydroponic before, but it's aeroponic produce for their food distribution site. And, um, so really excited to see what that looks like and how that works. Um, and so we'll, as we get that all set up, we'll, we'll take pictures and let everybody know that it's a great addition to healthy eating in Tacoma Park. And that's it. My comments today.
Okay, thank you. And actually, that reminds me too, one other thing I was going to mention that Councilmember Kovar mentioned is the distribution that happens every other Saturday at Tacoma Park Elementary School, um, with the Shepherds of Zion Church. They need volunteers particularly, um, to help also with, um, traffic, um, guiding traffic because the, um, reserves who used to volunteer have now been called up to go help out with vaccine distribution. So they will be very shorthanded, um, in the coming weeks. And so just want to put out that call there. And if you're part of a Boy Scout troop or any organized thing that think they could commit to doing this regularly, that would be really helpful.
So yeah, please give me a call, um, or the mayor, um, we'll, we'll try to work with you. I know they've asked for police assistance, but it's going to be difficult to provide that kind of level of police assistance on a regular basis. So it's a great group project and it means a lot for the many people that come to get the food.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could just mention one other thing. If people are interested, but they can't do it on Saturday, they also do need people to help with the setup on Friday.
Set up on Friday.
And so that starts around noon and can last well into the afternoon and into the evening because they're trying to position all the pallets with all the food to be ready for first thing the, the following morning. So, um, you could also contact me and I can put you in touch with the pastor or literally you can just show up there in the afternoon on Friday and you'll be put to work.
Thank you.
Great, awesome. All right, um, we'll move now, um, to our voting session. We have a number of items. The first is a second reading ordinance approving traffic calming for the 8,000 block of Wildwood Drive. There's no changes from the first reading. Does, do I have someone who'd like to move that? Councilwoman Cersei, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostic, any questions or comments? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Cersei?
Hi.
I'm not sure if maybe Councilmember Smith is here, but not on video.
I, I, I think unfortunately, I, I, after, during council comments, I, I think unfortunately he got disconnected. I haven't seen, so.
Okay. Um, and Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Great. Um, I see Ms. Machui joined us, but I'm going to do the next traffic calming ordinance and then we'll, we'll go to Ms. Machui for her comments tonight. The next is a second reading ordinance approving traffic calming for Darwin Avenue. This one as well has no changes from the first reading. Do I have someone who'd like to move this? Councilmember Kovar, do I have a second? Councilwoman Cersei, second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Cersei?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, um, Ms. Machui, do you want to, um, do your public comments now? Ms. Machui, can you hear us? I think you're on mute. We can't hear you.
There, I think.
There, I think you can hear me.
You're good to go now.
Hi. I, I just get cringe when I hear more traffic calming. To me, it's just another form of gentrification for the most part. And I'm, and I just, and the thing about unfortunate what happened in Georgia, but I think people should be aware that a lot of that is, are sex slaves. Those women who were murdered. That there is a lot of happening where especially Chinese-American women who are poor are persuaded by other Chinese people well or more well off to come to America. And they're going to give them a great job and an education. It turns out they're forced into prostitution. Many of them in these so-called like massage parlors. And I think that's what happened. I, it's, it's really sad. I think more should be done against this, the sex slave business. And it's really happening a lot. And second of all, I guess my son and I are, we're going to lose our house if we don't get help. And, and my, my son doesn't deserve it. He doesn't deserve to live on the street. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Maturi. I will go back to our voting session now. The next item we have out is the resolution regarding stormwater management. Again, I just want to thank my colleagues, particularly Councilmember Kovar and Dibala for working on this and drafting it. And so far, the only, before I asked for the resolution to be moved, the only outstanding question we had is which of the final therefore clauses, resolve clauses, we wanted to go with. One specifies the establishment of a climate resilience fund, and the other does not specify that. And I can, let's see, I can share my screen if that's easier for folks so you can see it. There we go. Councilman Dibala?
Yes, thank you. To the, to the point of potential funding for stormwater and not necessarily the resolution itself. I'm, I've been working pretty hard to try to get, and as have city staff and the city manager, to try to get an answer to the question whether stormwater is included as one of the infrastructure uses of the new federal relief money. We don't know yet, just so everybody's on the same page on that one. So before we assume we're going to have a lot of money to spend on stormwater, we're not sure.
Thank you. So I think I'm not seeing though, when I share my screen, it's a little harder for me to see hands. Just to let folks know, I'm not seeing any, wait, maybe it's a lie. Now, Councilmember Kovar has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I do appreciate the council having the opportunity to talk about this resolution. And I appreciate the mayor's involvement and Councilmember Dibala as well. And I think people may be aware that I have some concerns about us adopting the type of alternative fee structure that we're going to be considering next after we finish this resolution. And that I said I generally would feel more comfortable doing that, considering the change in the fee structure, if we also began to take some steps to address this broader question of the increased stormwater flows that we've begun to see between, among, and across private property, I think in ways that we hadn't previously owing in large part to the more intense rainstorms that we've begun to see connected to climate change. And that really all the experts or all the serious experts suggest will be something that is not going away. And so I'm pleased that the resolution has been forced because it sets us on that path. Now, I will say honestly, it's not literally legally binding to us to take action to, to address that. But to me, it sets the, the groundwork for us in the budget and beyond this year's budget and beyond to, if we can, to set aside some funds to, to try to address that. And I think it works in tandem with some of the changes that are talked about in the ordinance that aren't directly connected to the fee structure per se. And so I think it's a, it's an important resolution for us to adopt. I agree with Councilmember Dibala that we don't know for sure if the term sewer and water infrastructure includes broadband as well that's in the federal legislation, the federal pandemic relief legislation, if that specifically covers stormwater. I think water is water and it shouldn't matter, but I understand that we have to wait on the regulations and the guidance from the Treasury Department in particular to let us know about that. I'm optimistic that it will cover that, and we're doing what we can to reach out to our Maryland federal elected officials to encourage them to do what they can to clarify it in that way. To me, though, there's a couple of options. One is we could get some funding from the federal, from that federal law and use a portion of it for exactly what we're talking about here. The other option is that we could include some funds in our regular budget that will be separate from that. And this resolution by talking about this year's budget cycle and future budgets, I think leaves that a little bit open ended. And so either of those would be possible. I think to me, the only difference here really is do we say through the possible establishment of a climate resilience fund, so we wouldn't be required to do that. That's one option. I think it's a good one. And in fact, climate resilience fund could be used for other aspects of our climate work as well. It wouldn't be limited to stormwater as potentially such a fund would be if we use the federal money from the federal law. Or if we say the alternative is to say, which is in the top of the, of the two yellow pieces there, to simply say that we'll try to address these challenges for private property owners and how to address their costs. So both of those, I think, send us in a, in a positive direction. I prefer the second one simply because I think it's good for us to give an example of one way that could really work well for it. It doesn't bind us to it, but it says such as, that to me would be a greater option for doing that. I prefer a little more specificity here, given that this is after all just a resolution, doesn't bind us. I like the idea of saying, here's how we think it could work well. So I favor the second of the two yellow ones. And again, thank everybody else for all the work on the rest of the resolution.
Great. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, I have been supportive of the change in the stormwater fee structure. And I, I would support either of these changes as proposed tonight. But I do have a question. You know, we received an email from a city resident regarding House Bill 295 and suggesting that we postpone any decision on this until that bill is passed, if it does pass. And that would mean that we would wait until 2022 before taking any action. His, his allegation is that, you know, implementing the change in stormwater fee at this time could result in overburdening city staff. I don't see that, but I thought it would be fair for the city manager to respond to that suggestion.
I think Councilman Dibala may have some thoughts because she, I know she's been tracking, tracking the legislation in Annapolis, but the city manager wanted.
I don't think I, I don't think I know enough to say that answer. Either, either Ms. Dibala or Ms. Braithwaite may know.
Cindy, you're on, Councilwoman Dibala, you're on mute.
How State House Bill 295 is, has passed both houses, and there's some minor language that, that needs to be worked out, but it looks like it will become law, state law. I'm, what the bill does is to require that the state DEP address the underlying design standards, the underlying rainfall data, update the rainfall data that is used to set the stormwater standards that then we all use for permit decisions and so forth. I'm not sure I get the connection with the stormwater fees because, which fee systems, because whichever fee system we pick tonight, we are looking at about the same amount of money. And if the state DEP revises the underlying standards, and then that changes somehow how much money we need to, from two, two, two years from now, that to me, that question applies no matter which system we're talking about, the one we have now or the one with the impervious scale. It may conceivably affect the definition of impervious area that the state uses. But again, that's pretty far out, and that's not a certainty.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I would also just add that that's particularly relevant related to stormwater permits, which are triggered when there's development. So if a single family property is disturbing 5,000 square feet or more, that keys them into being required to submit a stormwater permit. Any and all commercial institutional or industrial development is required to get a stormwater permit. So that change at the state level relative to rainfall data and other updating of the standards will be tied to the stormwater permit process and the criteria by which we will evaluate stormwater management related specifically to development. So the stormwater fee is separate from that in that it addresses the overall management of our existing infrastructure, our pipes, our inlets, our stormwater system, regardless of any development.
All right. Thank you for your time and expertise.
Great. Councilman Kostick?
Thank you. I was just going to weigh in on the two different options in terms of the, the last two items in the resolution. And then I assume we'll have a more thorough discussion before we vote on the ordinance as well. I have some, some questions related to that. But I, I guess I'm, I'm curious and, and maybe I'm just not fully understanding what exactly a climate resilience fund would look like and what it would, what exactly the parameters of that would be. So I think it might be something that we want to pursue, but I'd just like to know a little more about it before committing to it. So I'm somewhat more interested in pursuing the, the first sentence there, but doesn't specifically name it, just to give us a little more flexibility.
Thank you. Councilman Dibala, is that another hand up or?
It, it is. And, and that, and rather than, that's precisely why I wanted to have a different set of words. It's because while that's a great idea, rather than have the policy discussion right now about the details, that would be something we would absolutely want to explore. Whether, whether a fund of that sort, would it look like the housing fund? Would it look like the climate sustainability fund? What would it look like? How would we use it rather than have that conversation tonight? That, that's all I have to say.
Yeah. And I, if I can jump in, I think I would say that, again, this document is not binding legislation. It's a statement of principles and goals for the council as we've done previously with, for example, the resolution that accompanied the tree ordinance revisions that we did last summer. And I think there were a number of items in that resolution that were not specific and on which we all sort of agreed we weren't going to have the entire policy or legislative discussion at that point. That would be something that we work out later at the appropriate time. And it's certainly the case that a climate resilience fund could be included within the somewhat more general language that's in the alternative yellow paragraph, to use that term. Just as when you say such as the possible establishment of a climate resilience fund, you're not limiting to that. I think though, for me, the key is I like the idea of at least setting up the possibility that we will designate, allocate some funds specifically for addressing this broader stormwater problem. And to me, the way in which the first one is a little deficient on that point is it says we need to find ways of addressing the costs. Ways of addressing the costs could be enhanced credits, could be encouraging neighbors to find ways to band together and hire, you know, us helping them find contractors to help them determine what's going on. What I'm hoping for here, and I'm hoping this sends a signal on, is the idea that one of our possible options really is to say, we're going to set aside a substantial chunk of money. I don't know how much that would be and precisely how, how would we use. We're going to set aside a substantial amount of money to really be able to start grappling with, with this problem. And I think the second one to me has a better chance of us getting there than the first one does.
So I think we know Councilman Dibala and Kovar disagree on this. So instead of going through.
I'll say Cindy and I have just had the same discussion over the phone a few times too, so.
I guess I just waded right into it too. Sorry about that.
So unless somebody has another point, I think we'll just do a show of hands on who would like to see the language include the climate resilience fund in the resolve clause. So if you want to include the language of the climate resilience fund in the resolve clause, raise your hand. I see three. That means it gets in without the language. So we will use the resolve clause without the climate resilience fund name. And so now will someone please move the stormwater resolution? Councilmember Kovar, do I have a second? Councilman Dibala? Any additional amendments, changes, questions on the resolution, and then we'll get to the ordinance. Councilwoman Circe?
So one thing that was a little confusing for me, and I think it's the, God, there are a lot of wheres. On page two, the, I guess the one, two, three, four, the whereas clause, where we talk about the current, currently play, pay a flat rate of $92. And then we say in that six whereas clause that approximately 20% of residents that would reduce the annual stormwater fee paid by approximately 20% of residents was around 24% paying $100 and about 55% paying a higher amount. One question I had is whether or not we wanted to call out that in reality, under a flat rate structure, if we were to keep that structure, it would be $108 and not 92. So in reality, you would have about 44% of residents that would be paying less than a flat rate structure. So I, I don't know, you know, maybe this is a question for, you know, the director of public works. But, you know, how would it be beneficial for us to make that point clearer that we are not in fact raising, even at that $100, which would on the surface appear to be higher than the 92 that folks are paying right now. The reality is if we kept a flat rate, they would be paying one, they would be paying 108.
Thanks for raising that point. We've kind of, we kind of skipped that in the process based on last year's discussion of this topic. So I, I think that's a relevant point that in order to maintain the revenue that we need to continue the program, the fee would have to go up. And if it was a flat rate, it would be 108. I would say that. And if it was a flat rate, it would be 108. So I would say that perhaps we could put language in that said, you know, at the rate since whatever it was, 2016 was 92, but would need to be raised to 108 the revenue stream needed for the program.
So Mayor, I, I'm not sure if I need to propose a where, whereas language now or if.
Well, we, we're voting on it. So yeah. It would be an amendment now because it's a, it's a resolution. So it's, it's one vote. And, and if I could maybe uh, suggest in the whereas clause that starts under the current annual stormwater fee structure, um, single-family homeowners currently pay a rate of $92.
Um.
And you could say which would need to be $108 or something like that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to add, which would need to be a hundred and eight dollars. Um, in FY 2022. We can make that amendment while the commercial owners fee based on the, all right, and that would be the same. And then would we want to make a change then in the other whereas clause, Councilwoman Circe, that you raised? About the 20% and the 24%.
Yeah, um, yes, so we could say the new fee structure is expected to reduce the annual stormwater fee paid by um, approximately, um, we could actually just make it 44% of residents. Or maybe we could say with approximately 44% of residents paying less than $100 and about 55% paying a higher amount.
Mm-hmm. Cool, so.
Just, I, I think it should say paying less than 108 because you do.
Yep, yep. All right, so and if you can see that I changed so that the whereas clause, so the amendment on the table would add to the whereas clause above after $92, which would need to be $108 in FY 2022. And then we're changing it to 44% of residents paying less than $108 and 55% paying a higher amount. Um, do I have a second for that amendment?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Kostick. I can't see everybody when I'm sharing my screen. All right, any comments or questions on the proposed amendment? Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, um, I think it's a little, this is a little bit of the, of a distortion of what's, of what's happening here because the assumption is that we would approve the $108 dollar structure, and we don't know that. We haven't voted on, on the structure. And it's okay, I suppose to say, which would uh, need to be $108 if uh, a tiered rate is, is going to be adopted, it probably will be. But the other whereas clause was factually accurate and um, no one is paying $108 now. People are paying $92. So if that second whereas clause that has the percentages is the statement of how it compares to the current flat rate. Current flat rate is not $108. The current flat rate is $92. If people are watching this and want to know, how will this change compared to what I'm paying now? It's, it's, I guess it's true that 44% would pay less than 108, but that's not a measure of a comparison to what people are paying now. So I, I could accept the idea of which would need to be $108 and basically a 22 if a tiered structure similar to the one, uh, tiered structure were to be adopted uh, with the goal of retaining a 700,000 or so overall funding level. But I think the other change just strikes me as not giving a clear picture of what's happened.
Councilwoman Circe, did you want to, and then.
Yeah, so I think one of the things that is important, I think, that the whole course of us going down this path, at least I thought, um, was the fact that we were going to have to increase our stormwater fee um, in order to maintain our current um, level of funding, given what um, the study showed in terms of what um, institutional multifamily and folks, what, what their level of impervious surface is. So you know, for me, and the way I've explained it to residents is, you know, in order for us to keep our stormwater fee, in order for us to maintain our stormwater budget, it was going to have to come from you. There was gonna, either we were gonna have to get it in the tax rate, or we're gonna have to increase everyone's flat rate to $108. And instead, what we're trying to do is make it more equitable and that you pay based on the amount of impervious surface that you have. I actually think it is misleading to have people think that we were, um, although they may be currently paying $92, for them to think that their new stormwater fee was going to be $92 because it wasn't. It was gonna have to go up. Either again, through the stormwater fee itself, or if we were to subsidize it in some way, it would be reflected in the tax rate in some way. So they were gonna have to pay one way or another. So I, I do think that that's a distinction, especially when we're trying to explain to people what's happening um, to make clear. Um, so in reality, they're under a flat fee of that 108. There's a lot of people that would actually save money under this approach. Um, and I think that's something that, you know, is important to, to help people to understand.
Councilmember Kovar, if we added as what I highlighted here in FY 2022?
I, I just feel like the assumption here is that that is what is going to happen. We don't know that that is what was going to happen. In fact, I I've had, I sent it, I submitted a question earlier today about the totals. And to me, that's something, you know, the, whether it's 700,000 or more than 700,000, that's still up in the air as far as, as far as I've been able to determine. And I, I thought we'd get into that discussion when we got to the um, the ordinance. I think we ought to state what is factually the case. And yes, 44% of the people who pay less than $108, we never voted for $108. So, you know, I mean, it, saying that this is what we think might have happened, and so they're getting a bargain, just doesn't strike me as as, as giving people a full picture either.
So I do have a question for the, the Director of Public Works. So the the stormwater fee calculations based on what we are voting on right now, um, were those calculations based on maintaining our stormwater rate? Um, as it was previously, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is are the estimates in terms of the amounts that people would have under the new structure based, based off of that 100, assuming whatever that 108 amount would have been, correct?
Right. The Black and Beach study basically analyzed our past year's budget and our, um, our statement to them that we needed to maintain at least $700,000 annually to continue the program. So I think an exact figure was closer to 729, but we've just been saying 700,000 as a kind of a ballpark because some years it's a little more, some years it's a little less. And so their analysis um, aimed for that goal uh, in terms of revenue. And as they ran the, the calculations based on the change in the equivalent residential unit, the, the ERU that went from 1,200 to 2,100, um, they basically came back to us with, if you want to maintain that ballpark $700,000 of revenue, you would need to increase your single-family flat rate to 108. Um, and that the um, the result was primarily as, uh, due to the larger uh, impervious area, the calculation for those multifamily, commercial and institutional properties was somewhat less. The percentages had been flipped where 55% was single-family in the past and 46 was other. The actuality is it should have been the other way around, 46% um, other and the higher in the single families. So the, um, the Black and Beach analysis basically gave us that um, estimate. Um, that said, you would need to raise your flat fee to 108 in order to maintain your current revenue um, goal.
Okay, and um, it, city manager, I just want to confirm. So we are trying to determine now what um, the stormwater bills for people will be and the, um, what we talk about right now, what we're talking about right now, would basically need to go to the county to be put into the system. So that rate that we're putting forward right now would in fact have to be to the county before we would have or finalize any budget discussions about setting any future rates. I guess what I'm, I'm trying to say is we base these calculations on the 700. The amounts that, or the rates that we have to send forward to the county have to be based on that estimate of 700, right, to get the fees together, right? So I guess what I'm trying to understand is how is budget discussions that may happen in April, May?
So there's two, there's two steps here. One is just to get the structure in place allocated to every property. Um, and then you can change the rate over time, and you can say for the 500 square feet, it's not going to be $25, it's going to be 2750 or something like that in later time. I think at, for this point, we're just trying to get it all at once and so that we can get it all into the county. But then once they have the structure, we know kind of which, what size they're in, what tier they're in, then it's applying the rate to that, and you just type that into the spreadsheet and then it, it sprinkles out. It's us getting that complex spreadsheet information to the county that's a bigger lift. We're trying to do it all at once, but it, it really is two separate concepts.
So is it possible to Councilmember Kovar's point that the rate would change substantially from at least what we're projecting right now for households?
I don't think it would do that, and I don't, I would not recommend it. I don't think we have the capacity to, to, to play with that. Um, it, you know, I think that over the next couple of years, we'll see how things go, and you may, as a council, get a recommendation to change that rate. But at this point, I do not recommend uh, something different.
I would also just add, because a lot of our, uh, programs are planned, we have the five-year CIP, so we're putting out to the future what we're going to do over the next five years. We also have fixed costs related to the um, the amount of maintenance and video inspection and, and cleaning that we do. So we have control over our costs. Um, and we're able to maintain and manage our system at the current rate of, of um, effort in terms of expenditure. Um, if the state changes the requirements, or if the council and residents want to see different or more programs, then we'd have to look at a way to fund those. But we are, we have a long track record in our stormwater fund for what we use our money for and what we get from it. And we've projected what our projects are coming into the future. So we're fairly confident that to maintain the status quo of what we have, we have a pretty good handle on those, on those numbers. Um, new programs, changes in programs, changes in state law may affect that, but we know what we can get for that amount of money currently and what that will get us programmatically uh, into the future.
Great. Councilwoman Circe, would you be okay if we added um, to the paying of the, oh, sorry, let me get in front of me, the 44% of residents paying less than $108 in FY 2022?
Yes, I would be fine with that.
Okay, because I feel like it could change, right? Like, so I think that would.
Can I actually propose a, a slight change to that?
Yeah, let me share my screen so we can all see it.
I actually think it would be better to put that in the earlier whereas clause. Not maybe in that exact way, but saying something like um, which would need to be 108. Oh, you do have it there already. All right. Uh, oh, which would need to be 108 in FY 2022 in order to achieve, in order to raise the 700,000 or an equivalent amount in order to raise an equivalent amount. I don't know, I was just thinking that, that might be more.
Yeah.
Help clarify that point, which it seemed to me Councilmember Kovar was concerned about, but maybe it, maybe it doesn't.
I don't think you need it because you had the whereas clause before. That's, that, I think.
All right. Okay, I don't feel strongly about it. Um, I did, was just thinking, and I had a question, two questions. Um, on the second whereas that we're modifying here, is it that it's 44% of residents? Or is it 44% of single-family property owners?
We're specifically speaking specifically.
It should be single family property, property owner.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, I, I guess I move that we, a friendly amendment to this member Circe's amendment.
He's nodding her head. I think that's good, yeah.
Um, and then I just wanted to clarify, um, what we're voting on in the ordinance is a change to the structure, but it does not set the seven, the $25 per um, unit level that ultimately adds up to, to people's fee. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Um, we can.
No, the ordinance names both the base amount, which uh, and the fee. So it, it cites both the 500 square foot as the base unit, and I believe the 25 as the base rate. It's in the definitions.
Okay, we can discuss that when we get to the ordinance. I just wasn't sure if I was understanding it correctly. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Um, all right, does anyone have anything else to speak to this amendment that's on the table? Councilmember Kovar?
So I would just say two things. One, if you go to the first of the two that are proposed to be amended, um, I do agree with um, Councilmember Kostick, and I think I said a version of this. Um, it ought to say something like which would need to be $108 in FY 2022 in order to realize uh, uh, approximately the same uh, $700,000 overall amount or something like that. Because it's not just, it doesn't need to be that, and one needs to be that if we want to get the same amount of money, which, which I agree we do. And then the second question, and this is something for um, the Public Works Director, and I, and we had a brief exchange um, on email today. But I would like a clarification of this. So I think all my colleagues know that a few weeks ago, there was a document, we've all seen it, that broke out in extensive detail. Um, how many, ward by ward, how many properties, how many single-family properties would be paying each of the different amounts under this tiered uh, structure. And so we could look at it for Ward 1, listed this many people pay 100, this many people pay 25, as many people might even pay, you know, 300 for, for the handful that were that high. And then at the top of the list, for each ward, it gave the total amount that would be projected to be raised from this new structure. And so if you took each of those totals, all six, and you add them up altogether, and then add that to the estimate that's going to come from the commercial institutional multifamily properties, that's 777,722. So i- if, if Ms. Braythwaite could explain where all that extra money comes. I understand it was around 720, it's hard to get it exactly right, but those numbers which I think.
Or do we, can we, I, I, I just, and this is legit as a question. Can we have that conversation after we do the resolution, or is it pertinent to this point in the resolution? I just don't want to lose because we have, we have now another friendly amendment to the amendment, um, where we are in this process.
We can, if we add in the, the additional friendly amendment, we can postpone that discussion till the ordinance, sure.
And Councilwoman Circe, I highlighted it. You're good with that? Okay. Um, so we'll add that. Um, let's see, who else? Councilman Kostick, is that an old hand or? Yeah, an old one. All right, anyone else need to speak to the amendment on the table? Seeing no other hands, will the clerk call the vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, so that's then the resolution. Let me just save the. Alright, so that's then the resolution. Let me just save the changes so I don't lose them. Um okay, so the next we'll go to um the ordinance, and I think before I pull up the ordinance to go through it, um maybe this is an opportunity for the um Public Works Director to answer the question Councilmember Kovar just posed. And then I know just generally there were other questions about um appeals process, credit, notice, and other things that um how things will uh move forward. So if you want to address those two things before we get into the details of the ordinance.
Or um my answer is not very specific. I I would remind the council that we've been working on this since two thousand nineteen. And the uh information that we received from Black and Vetch has been adjusted in the intervening time. Uh so some of that household numbers may have been incorrect and adjusted. Um our effort was uh to take the Black and Beach report results and try to break it out in a way that was comparative. Uh so there may be some differences between the years in the charts that we provided, but the overall information uh remains consistent. So if there's some specifics, I can dig back through and figure out what chart was related to what page of the Black and Beach study and and pull that through. I have not taken the time to do that at this point, but as I think overall, the information remains consistent in in the general sense. Um it, we were trying to show the number of properties that would be paying more than, less than, or equal to uh the fees, and I think those general percentages remain um in in a se- in essence, correct. I think the other thing that we're aware of is that we have in the Black and Beach studies, some in included impervious area that will need to be removed if, for instance, a sidewalk or a section of the roadway was on private property. So it is a little bit of a moving target if you're trying to get to the exact numerical figure and percentage point. Uh but I think if we talk in generalities, we know that we're where we are uh in terms of the amount of funding that we need. And in general, where the properties shake out and how they're distributed across the city in terms of lower, middle, or higher level um impacts on the fee structure. Uh so I could, I could uh do the work to try to dig back through the past reports and identify which ones came from where to sort of figure out what the difference is in a hundred here or fifty there. Uh but I don't have that answer this evening.
Councilmember Kovar, is that, do you have any other follow up on that?
Well, it would be good to have that before the final vote.
Sure, and if you could give me some specifics about what you'd see, I can do the best I can in terms of trying to tie it to a particular page in the Black and Beach study.
Send it to you.
Mayor Stewart, may I?
I think we never voted on the resolution.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I I thought the vote was on the amendment to the resolution.
Yes, it was on the amendment, my apologies. Um it was. Um I knew I was going to get confused.
Alright, uh so we need to go back and actually vote. Is there, are there any other questions on the resolution? Or any other changes or amendments to be made? Alright, not seeing any, let's call the vote now on the resolution.
Okay, as amended. Yeah, Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, now we're done. Um alright, the next question, um I think um if we, uh if uh the head of public works wanted to talk more generally about um just sort of the, if this, if the ordinance moves forward, the process will have, how notice will be um given to people, what uh an appeals process will look like and everything.
Or well, uh we're still working on some of those details, but if the council were to pass this, um my understanding is that sometime in May, we would need to get numbers to the county in terms of including it in their uh upcoming tax um bill for fiscal year twenty two. Um so which is a very uh brief timeframe for us to provide um that level of uh detailed over four thousand private property um billing units to to the county. Um the goal at this point is if the council moves forward on changing this the fee structure from the flat fee to the tiered, our intention is to send a mailing out to every property owner, not just single family, but all property owners, which would identify for them the new fee structure that's in place, because it would be a change for not only single family, but all other properties using the base rate of five hundred and the twenty five dollar per five hundred. So we would send a notice out to all pri- property owners that would identify both the change in the fee structure as well as their impervious area calculation and and um you know, how it broke out in terms of building, walkway, parkway, parking, driveway, whatever the components were that were identified in the analysis done by Black and Beach. Um we're under the impression that we can do a mail merge with our Excel sheets. So individual letters, not letters, individual uh mailers would would be uh created and prepared to go to every property owner. Um and it would be individualized for that property. Uh that's going to take some significant time and some significant cost to get that mailing out. Uh probably in the vicinity of five to six thousand dollars, um not counting staff time. So the hope is if this gets settled, um and we can move forward, then we'll begin to look at our uh Excel spreadsheet to try to get it in order and start creating that um flyer and then work with a mailing company to do the mail merge send out of that. So that would be something in in April, best case scenario, early May, uh worst case scenario. Um the in, the intention is, of course, as we know, to provide an opportunity as there currently exists for um property owners to uh ask for correction if they think there's something wrong with the calculation. And we'll provide all the detail that we have. And so we we would anticipate that we would receive a number of calls, questions, requests. We would create a a form for people to submit their correction requests to us. And the goal would be to try to uh put a priority on evaluating those correction requests. If people have identified that they don't think that impervious area calculation is right or our property boundary information is wrong, uh and the maps of the property boundary is already on the city's website and will continue to remain up and available for people to look at. So if they uh have an uh indication that they think there's an error in the calculations, uh that will be the priority for us this summer, to receive those and try to quickly determine if there was an error in the county's GIS um uh maps, or if there's an error in the county tax records, or if there was an error in the calculations that were done of impervious area. And some of it would be able to be done uh remotely, you know, just looking at county records, looking at property owner survey uh maps. Others would have to be done actually on site, where we go out and measure and determine if there was inaccuracies in the impervious area calculation. You know, is the house the square footage that it said? Is their shed included? Is the neighbor's shed accidentally included on their calculation because the property boundary is inaccurate on the county's database? So those are the kind of stuff that we'd have to do fieldwork on. We don't really know what kind of um uh request for correction we're going to get. Um we don't really have a comparison to go by. We've had very few correction requests. Though the process has been in place for those other properties, the commercial and industrial and institutional, we get them on occasion, but it's been very rare. I think with this and the mailing to every property owner, we can anticipate, uh you know, a certain percentage of of property owners responding. So we'll try to be geared up to be able to respond to those in a reasonable timeframe. Our goal would be thirty days. I don't know if we're being overly optimistic, uh but we certainly would uh maintain contact with any of people who requested a correction if we couldn't get through it in thirty days uh to let them know when we would be able to do that. So that would kind of be the bulk of the summer. You know, the May-June timeframe, and if we found that there were errors in the calculations, we would then need to notify the county and correct um the billing information that we had submitted to them in May. Uh so the, that's our um estimation at this point, that just preparing that notification, creating the information on the website and responding to the request for correction is pretty much going to um be what we can be able to accomplish um in the, in the spring and summer. Um we would also be at that time creating the credit program. Um and by that, we would be establishing the application form for credits, the criteria for credits. So we would help to define those and uh create webpages for each of those so people would know exactly what they could apply for and what information they would need in order for us to review it. And then we would envision that that process would would kick off once the bulk of the correction work was done. And then we would shift to credit applications and and open that period for uh receiving credit applications. Uh the difference between a correction and a credit is a correction, for instance, is my property boundary is wrong. The size you said my house was is wrong, my driveway is bigger or smaller than that. Those are kind of very factual, on the ground type of corrections. Uh the credit program is some, something much more detail oriented. It's actually getting at evaluating a stormwater treatment facility that a property owner may have put on their property. So in order to evaluate that, we need to first create the application and the and the criteria um by which we would um consider something for credit. And then we would have to receive an application from a property owner. And they would have to provide us the background information on what they did, if they have a dry well, if they have a rain garden, if they have a bio retention facility, if they've disconnected their downspouts and are running it into a um vegetated swell that absorbs the water. We'd have to create the criteria for those types of things. And looking at this across the country, we found some interesting uh synergy that we might want to tap into. Part of that uh would include uh tree planting credit. So we could tie into a tree planting program, so that if you planted two or more trees, you could get a certain credit. Uh there's also um some cities that have done participation credits. So if you participate in a stream cleanup or Friends of Sligo Creek uh cleanup or, you know, a litter pickup or um, you know, adopt a park or, you know, whatever. We, again, we have to define and clarify what those things would be, that there is an ability to um motivate um applicants to consider taking direct action as as a way to get a credit. Uh so we'll be continuing to look at programs around the country and pulling out the best of that and figuring out what fits best with our our city and what's likely to be beneficial, both for the property owners and for the city's water quality itself, and establish that credit program. The way we envision it, and council may have different uh goals, and we're certainly happy to hear that, and we'll try to change um our our views as needed. Uh we really sort of see the credit program as being towards a year or two. Uh so that we would establish the program, allow for applications, evaluate people's credit applications and let them know what credit they could be entitled to for the measure that they took. Um and then we would have that prepared for the next year's billing cycle, so that we could then uh provide them with here's your flat, you know, here's your tiered rate uh fee, uh but you're going to get a credit of ten percent or twenty percent. We'd like to uh max it out at fifty percent. And that would again be relative to the amount of treatment that's taking place on a property and could be cumulative. For instance, if they participated in a program, they can get five percent. If they planted a tree, they can get five percent, that brings them up to ten percent. If they put in a dry well or have a cistern, they could get an additional percentage. And we envision that the percentage of credits would really be tied to the treatment capacity that that facility provides. So they have a certain amount of impervious area, which gen- generates a certain amount of runoff on their property. And if the facility that they built or created uh can absorb ten percent of that runoff or twenty percent of that runoff in a one year or two year storm, then that would be the basis for the credit. So we would tie it to a- as clear as we can uh figures for the size of the facility, uh the drainage area of the property, and uh what it's capable of um treating in terms of the regular of uh level of storm. We have um, we have criteria through the state uh in the, in the design manual for stormwater facilities. So we would be using that as the, as the basis for our uh determinations about the construction of those treatment facilities. Um so um I don't want to get too deep in the weeds here, um but the, the intention would be to take the credit program very seriously, uh require documentation uh and field visits. And also, in addition to those credits only being um able to be a certain percentage of the fee, uh we also would, would um allow them to be multi-year, not permanent. Not you get your twenty percent credit for now and forever, but you get your twenty percent credit for a period of two years or three years. And then you need to reapply and show us that that bio retention facility or that cistern is still in good working order. You're maintaining it, it's doing what it's supposed to do, and ultimately, it's it's a benefit for for the city and the property owner. So we would anticipate that these credits in many cases would be um not ongoing but would be uh termed, you know, a certain term, and that you would reapply to extend it for an additional term based on documentation that the facility is still in working order.
Great. Um terrific. So that, just, I don't know if anyone has any questions. We're not going to get too deep into the credit program tonight, because we don't have the details of it and that's not in this, the ordinance changes we're making. What we're focusing on now is whether the councils decide to change um the uh the fee system. Uh Councilman Kostic?
Thank you. Um I have a couple of questions that are not related to the credit program. Um but that's, that's really helpful and useful to think through what what the program might look like. Um. So I was just glancing through, since we had the discussion about the base rate, and it looks like the base rate is not named in the ordinance, but it looks like it's, is that, is that essentially what the council would adopt each year in our budget process? Is that amount?
Um yes. Um it, the, the base rate, the rate would be something that you, that you would adopt as you're going through the budget um adoption process. Um I did send a message, because this was raised uh to the city attorney, to see if we need to reference it somehow in this, or if it's something that, you know, maybe it's part of the whereas, or there could be some other intent, that that's uh the provision at the beginning. But in the future, it would be the rate that you would set during the budget process. And and you will still need to set it at the budget process when we get to that point.
And does that, if we, for example, need to raise the the total amount of revenues to a million dollars or, I don't know, eight hundred thousand or whatever it might be, does that allow enough flexibility that you won't have a very small increase for some people and a relatively large increase for others if if it's essentially the base rate is is the twenty five dollars? And if we raise that to thirty, some people are going to pay thirty dollars and some people are going to pay thirty times however many of the base units they have. Does it, does that question make sense?
Well, I mean, I thi- I think you always have that issue. Um but I, you know, you're, I doubt you, you're likely to be changing it by a, by five dollars. I mean, I think it would be incremental. Um. I I I don't, I don't know a solution for that. It's just, it is a way to to recognize that there's a tiered system.
Yeah, I mean, this is our last vote on this, but I'd like to think through that a little bit, just to make sure that we have some flexibility when we do need to raise more funds, that we don't necessarily end up having it be really hi- high on the upper end and and not much of an increase on on other properties potentially. Um I also was just wondering, and maybe I just misheard you, Ms. Braithwaite, but you said that it'll be a change also for the um the non-single family home properties. What is the, the difference between, is there a difference between the two? Or will the, will the two be figured in the exact same way?
In, if we are to go to a tiered system, it will be consistent across the board. So all property owners, regardless of type of property, would be looking at the same fee structure. A five hundred dollar square foot impervious area is the base unit and a fee, as we're talking twenty five dollars currently um per base unit. What's happening right now is, single family property owners, since the advent of the fee, have played a base rate regardless of their impervious area. However, we calculated an average impervious area and use that as the base unit for charging all other types of property. So since the inception of the fee, all other types of property have had the average impervious area as the base unit, and, and their actual impervious area was divided by that average and then multiplied by the rate. So other properties have been paying a fee based on their impervious area using the equivalent residential unit and currently the, previously the $92 as the multiplication factor. So that's been, that's been in existence since the fee was established. There's a much smaller pool of those other properties than there is single-family. But it's, you know, several hundred, four hundred or more properties that are have been, since the inception of our stormwater utility fee, charged based on their impervious area. So this would-
So it's the difference-
Everything.
Yeah, it's the difference between the actual calculation of impervious area or the 500, how many 500 square feet they have.
Okay.
Of the units.
Okay. Then I was looking, and I know you talked about the difference between the credit versus, and, and correction versus appeal and some of those things. I was looking further down in the ordinance, and it does state that the corrections would be made within 30 days. Is that reasonable, since you expect those to be relatively minor, or would it make sense to perhaps say, except, and I don't know if this, this is legally possible, but to say within 30 days, except for in 2021 or something like that, due to the additional likelihood of there being more?
Well, some of that depends on the timing. So we will have this notification and this response time. Now, it could be that six months after we've notified somebody, they would apply for a correction. We could have that same evaluation period. We may be a little less inundated then. I think 30 days is reasonable, but I could envision if we had 500 property owners apply for a correction, we may not be able to get through that all in, in a 30-day period. It would be our goal to ensure that whatever valid correction was made and that their fee was corrected as a result of that. So if the correction that took place resulted in a change in their fee, we would want to make sure that even had they paid the fee at that point, the city would correct it. So there's a real difference there in the correction, because it's based on an error versus a credit program, which is based on actions taken to, you know, on private property.
Yeah, I think we might just want to look at for next week, maybe adding in some flexibility on that for the first year, if that's possible. Um, on the kind of bigger picture, I had thought, and maybe I misunderstood, that we were thinking about a cap more or less permanently on the, the total amount that people might pay, rather than it just being a one-year. Is that, that's not other people's understanding?
That's, that's not what I thought we had discussed.
All right, I guess I, I was thinking this was more of a, a permanent cap, so we wouldn't have people paying such really high levels.
It was, it was described as a phase-in.
Okay, I think we went back and forth between calling it a phase-in and a cap, and, and I think that had me confused, but I, I would just recall looking at some of the, the, the information that you had provided from other jurisdictions. And I wonder, it seems like a lot of those had lower level rates overall. I, I, I didn't see ones that were up, up at like $500 and some of those higher levels, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, they're all over the map. It really depends on how broad a population they serve and how many payees they have into the system. So there's, there's jurisdictions that have far higher stormwater utility fees than, than we do, particularly for the commercial accounts. Though, you know, it, it can really vary based on the number of properties that are paying into a system.
That's something I think I'll, I'd like to take a further look at before next week.
Just on, on a side note on that, we did pull out the top rate, those, those properties. And, and again, I'm speaking specifically to single-family and not to the other, because we have commercial properties that are paying $10,000 and more in stormwater utility fees. So for those single-family properties, there is about 46, 47, something in that ballpark, less than 50, that are paying more than $275, so $300 or more. And so it is a very small percentage of the overall total of property, properties that would pay into the system. So it is, it does, you know, it does, it is very, very small.
And do you have a sense of what the budgetary impact of that is?
Yeah, we took a look at that. If, if we had no cap, I think the total fee would be 16,000 something for those 47 properties. And if we did have the cap, it was a little less than $3,400 less. So by capping and have nobody paying more than 300, $275, it would reduce the, the revenue generation from that top end by $3,375. So again, fairly small relative to the fund overall that we're, we're hoping to generate.
Councilmember Kostic, I think one thing that we, we do want to keep in mind is that between caps and credits, we still need to get the $700,000. And that means that we're putting more onus on the lower kind of the lower level of the folks. So people who, potentially who have less money may end up having to have a, a higher rate to help offset those that have those higher amounts. So it's, it's part of this is our race equity concerns, and part of it is fairness for environmental reasons on impervious surface. That all needs to be balanced as you're looking at these rates.
And can I just ask a question while we're on that? Because it's, you know, and it may not happen in the first couple of months, but given that it's less than 50 households, could we pull those folks and for their letters, make sure that they understand that this is, that we put a cap in and what their actual amount was supposed to be for this year, so that they know moving forward and can plan, and then that we're putting in a, a credit program, so if they want to look at ways to adjust, they're able to do that. So I think one of the reasons we talked about this as a phase-in was like, so somebody didn't realize this year, they had to pay like $350, right? But if we keep it as a phase-in, we want to make sure that we're kind of giving folks notice that next year, if we're phasing it in, there's no cap, that that's what their stormwater fee will be. Does that make sense?
We did want to be very clear that there was a cap and that it was a one-year, so that they know what to expect.
Yeah.
Yes, so I, I think you're correct. We would need to have a specialized mailing for those. Share that information on the cap with everybody, per se, because it would be confusing. So we target a, the mailer for those top-end single-family properties to be specifically referenced to that.
And I just have one more, one more question. So one of the things I hear from people periodically is about the people who have a larger space and the fact that they may be offering some additional stormwater benefits through not having development on that larger space. I, I think it gets a little tricky, because you're talking about providing people credit basically, basically for owning more property, which I, I don't necessarily think makes sense. But I do think there, there's a sense that they may have more impervious space, but they also have a significant amount of pervious space. And I'm just curious if you can kind of talk to why, why we're looking at this through just the impervious measurement and not kind of a percentage of property or, or other things, and if there's any other kind of opportunities within the credits to, to offer people for, you know, changing parts of their property into pervious space?
I think part of the main reason most municipalities don't do a percentage of impervious to total property is because of the potential inequity issues raised by that. And there is also so many factors that affect runoff, topography being the biggest. If you have a driveway, straight up your huge lot, and, and your property graded to that driveway, doesn't really matter how much undeveloped land you have, if the runoff itself is directed towards that driveway. So to avoid the individual space by, you know, property by property lot analysis, which would become not, not feasible for cities to incorporate, most are taking a look at, at using just the impervious area as the, as the way to generate that. The other piece of this that is totally unspoken about is all our roads, sidewalks, and city facilities, they generate runoff, right? So part of the stormwater infrastructure is to manage the runoff from those roads, from those public roads, from those public amenities, from those public buildings. So that all has to be managed and taken care of as well. So even if private property owners were able to manage and, and filter and treat all the stormwater from their property, there's still the aspect of the public roadway systems that need to be managed and maintained for the, for the safety of the community as well as for water quality. So we all have our role to play in this, even if we don't have, you know, even if we do have treatment on our own property, we do have the larger community-wide system that needs to be installed, maintained, and developed to, to manage that runoff. That's kind of a little sideline. But in looking at the ways communities have established fee structures, most either do the equivalent, equivalent residential unit, which just gives a flat fee, but those that have looked into it more deeply and are, are focused a little more on equity, tend to then go to the base unit and impervious area, because it's easy to identify based on tax records, based on GIS, based on aerial footage, and it's also explainable. And it can be easily understood. And it, it creates a, a place to start in terms of trying to compare differences among properties and what they may generate. It's also reasonable to assume that the larger amount of impervious area you have on your property, the larger likelihood of runoff that you have from your property. It's not 100% equivalent, but it is a reasonable assumption.
Easily understood is, is relative, I think, but I- Thank you.
Councilman Dibala and then Kober.
Yes, thank you.
I would just say, I'm sorry, but I would just say the ERU has been the hardest thing to understand. I really look forward to going from ERU, which, what the heck is that? To 500 feet of impervious area per. That will be a huge, I, I think we'll all be able to understand it better. Sorry, sorry, Councilmember Dibala.
No, thank you for the, all the information about the other programs and how they structure their credits for measures that residents take to manage water on their property. That was really, really helpful. And, and I saw also, I saw a pretty big range of fees, depending on the city. Baltimore, I think it was, had like up to 1,500 bucks. So whoa, okay, so. But what I found interesting was that even though the fee, fee range is relatively small, and it's smaller than the cost of some of the measures, there still was this general sense that you want to give people some credit for doing the right thing, and most of them, if not all of them, did come in around that about 50% of your fee is the bottom end of what we can give you because of the public space that everybody has to pay for. I just, I thought that was really interesting. Thank you for sharing that. I did, when we get to the ordinance line by line, I think some of what you said about the schedule suggests to me some adjustments in some of the sections, and I hope I can keep track of all of them. I wanted to ask one thing, a couple of things about scheduling. I heard you say that you would endeavor to do the corrections over the summer and notify the county to correct the billing, but the billing will have gone out. So are, are we gonna need to, so the bills go out, we get our property tax bills in what, the end of August, early September? And that has the fee on it. So let's just take my house, and let's just say that a correction reduces my bill 50 bucks, but we don't find that out till September. So then you would let the county know to correct the billing and let me know that I don't have to pay that extra 50 bucks?
No, I think the general way we do that is to have people pay the fee as is, is in their bill, so there's no confusion there about a shortage in their, in their fee payment. We would notify the county to correct for the next future billing, so we'd identify that correction for the next time around. And the city would then have to refund that portion of the, of the fee that the property owner paid that was incorrect. So typically with these, we always say pay the, pay the bill as it is. If there's an error that needs a correction, the city will then send them the correct, you know, a refund that will correct the amount.
Okay, so I'm aware that that's more staff work, but then that might be, let's play this out. So then I pay my second half of my property tax in December, but by then I might have received the check from the city correcting for my 50 bucks? Or would it not go that quick, that fast? Is the goal, is the goal, is the goal to get-
Yeah, most people get their, don't even see their property tax bill. It's part of their escrow. So it's something that's being paid for monthly through their escrow account. So only those folks that pay their property tax bill directly will see that September and December bill.
And for those of us, for those of us who do, is the, is it realistic? Maybe it's not, to think that we might get re, if we, if we do get through the credits over the summer, maybe it trickles into, excuse me, not credits. No, I've done it. The corrections. We get through that, August, September, we're done. Would it be reasonable, realistic to think that those of us who do have our own bills would see the, the fee returned to us by the end of the year? Or is that too ambitious?
I, I think the, the best process is that you pay the property tax bill with that amount on it. We give you a refund if there's a correction needed, and then the next year it will be the lower amount.
Right. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong word. The timing of the refund. What's realistic?
We actually do those relatively quickly. Yeah, I mean-
So, so it's possible that somebody would get their refund by the end of the year, and if they're cash short.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't see a reason why we would pull them up and wait. I think that as we get them identified, we would, you know.
We just handle these on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's important for me to understand, and for residents who do see their own bill to understand. Another timing issue related to the credit program. I thought I heard you say that the credit program, you're aiming for the next year. And some, and I, and I at least was hoping that we could capture credits at some point, capture credit for work people have already done for this first, before this first billing cycle. Meaning, not, not meaning we're going to subtract it before they get the bill, but that when we do the credit program, it addresses credit in this first new set, new set of bills for work that people have done already. And so my question, if I understood you correctly, you weren't thinking that way. What would it take to do that? Would it take a couple of temporary staff to process the credits faster? What, what, what would it take to be able to, to give people credit in this first year of the new program for work they've already done?
Yeah, I think the part of the big lift will be defining the credits and creating the apparatus and the structure for us to analyze the credit.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And, and again, you're looking at the person who will likely be doing that. We don't go very deep in our staff. We don't have a lot of people in the Public Works Department capable of doing that, that aren't otherwise doing other things. We could certainly speak to Black and Beach or our other, other engineering consultants or companies that have done similar programs and get their advice on credit programs. When it comes down to detailing the applications and the, and the review and the process, we have to develop that ourselves. So we could certainly use consulting services for helping to get at that a little clearer. I think the other piece that we're very aware of is we need to have our, our ducks in a row. We need to have our criteria well-established and defined. We need to have it documented. We need to have a webpage clearly available and accessible to people to see. We need to have an application that is understandable and usable. We need to have an application that is understandable and usable. And we have to have a process. Okay, when the application, when the credit application comes in, where does it go? Who deals with it? How do we log it? What's the process? Is it remote? Is it online? Is it hard copy? So we have to just create that from nothing. And so we're, we're not there yet in terms of knowing what's the best way to do it. I feel like the priority really needs to be on correction, given, you know, the fact of the matter, if something is not right, we need to make it right. And then the credit really comes about as the next phase and as our program matures.
Right, and I'm, and I'm, I'm aware that, I'm aware that the mayor asked us not to go into the details of the program and I apologize for bringing it up. The reason I brought it up, even though I, I could talk with Daryl about this all night, it's interesting to me. But the reason I brought it up is because in the ordinance suggested code language, it implies that some, some timeframes about when people get credit for what? Not for what, when people get credit. And so we need to deal with that piece this week, next week, as we're passing the ordinance. Not, not so much the, 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 I realize they're all connected, but not, but that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, absolutely. And I also want to say that I think that, given our community and the interest in this, we can't, we can't develop this in a silo. We have to create our programs and then have public input and review and critique of those. So that takes time as well. I, I just know the sensitivity of this. We take it very seriously and we want to create a program that, you know, can stand up to review and that makes sense and that, you know, really addresses those things that are most beneficial for our community in terms of private property stormwater treatment.
Yeah.
I agree, your point, there is ordinance language, so we have to know how that.
Something about, yeah.
Credit is established.
Yeah, so that, that brought up the two other, two other points. One was the public process on the regulations had occurred to me. And the other one, the, the documentation and field visits, again, a section of the actual code that implies as written that everybody has to do a certain thing. And I don't think we know that yet. My last question, if you can bear with me one more time, is what is your sense of the numbers of people that you've heard from single family homes that have called about why it is, why is my bill this way? Why am I being billed for my neighbor's driveway or my sidewalk, your city sidewalk or the? Are you getting two calls, 20 calls, 200 calls? And the same question for people who are calling about credits, credit type questions. So for me, I've had a couple dozen questions about the credit section, but I've only had a few people asking about property lines and in, in, in where the driveway is. I've had a few more people ask about the definition of impervious area. So just for my ward, that's what I'm hearing. I'm curious what you're hearing right now.
Yeah, I, I actually am surprised to be not having much since the letter went out. I think probably in total, maybe two dozen people have contacted me directly, some through the council members. Most were in the general frame of inquiry. Can you tell me what my impervious area is and how it breaks out? And I provide that and they go, okay, thank you very much. I also have had some people question it and then when I explain what it's about, they go, oh yeah, that's right. We do share the driveway.
Okay. I'm, I'm hoping that gives some sense of what the volume was.
Yeah, I really, you know, until this thing really hits, I have no idea. In terms of credit, I haven't had any, you know, anything other than council members and kind of some general questions on will you have a credit program? So it's, we really haven't, I don't think we've, you know, really pushed, put out, put that out there in a definitive way. I think once we develop a program for people to review, we'll get lots of comments and questions about it, but.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think Councilmember Kovar was next and then Cersei. And we do have, Councilmember Kovar and Dibala gave line item changes to the ordinance, which we are voting on tonight. So just, just to let folks know, we'll go to that in a second.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor, for that. Before we get into that, I just had a couple of things I want to mention. And maybe Public Works Director can, can talk about this. So one of the questions has come up and this relates to the definition of impervious areas, but also in several other cases, there's the FAQs, the frequently asked questions. And I believe that my understanding was that those would be posted online to kind of go along with, very technical term, to go along with the ordinance to explain some of the backgrounds of people that they would be able to look at, particularly for those who aren't a customer, don't want to deal with some of the technical provisions of the ordinance itself. And so if there were, I mean, I noticed a few things in the FAQs that, you know, if I ruled the world, I would describe differently. Is that something, we're not going to amend that tonight clearly, but is that something if we reach out to you, we could talk about once we finish the ordinance? Because I want to make sure it's matched up. There are a couple, a couple of spots where it wasn't. I just want to make sure that's on the table for us to address in the future.
Yes, the FAQ is up on the website now and has been since the prior council meeting. So that is definitely available for people and I have sent it out to people. But if there's changes or clarifications or additional questions that council or anybody else would like to see added to that, it's seven pages, why not make it eight, you know, let's go.
It is, it is part of the packet, it is part of the packet tonight as well.
So if we could focus on the ordinance, I think would be.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask about.
I just, I, I know we have the police chief who's going to go through his report. We have a number, number of other items and so.
So the only, the only other thing I'm going to mention is there's something that relates to the ordinance, but we agreed not to deal with this time around is this question of the larger stormwater permits for big commercial and industrial structures and properties. And I agree not to propose that now and hopefully we'll get to that in a, in a future time at some other time, not to these folks this weekend, next week. That's all I have to say.
Councilman Cersei.
So I just want to pick up on one point, Daryl, that you raised about staff capacity and prioritizing corrections during the year, first year. And I just want to make sure that we're all of like mind that if it were the case, that once we kind of unveil things, that there's a lot of corrections that require more staff time and capacity to do. Whether or not you could come back to us to let us know whether or not we need to do something extending the phase in period for those households that are at that higher tier. I, I think that's something that's really important. I mean, I, I'm assuming that maybe the correction period, you know, a year would be enough time and people would be able to easily kind of get some of those things taken care of. But I would assume that that might be one stopgap that the council could have. I'll have anything through all of the, the nuance of the credit program to immediately make sure that we kind of give ourselves a little bit more time and not at the detriment of those residents that are at those higher tiers in terms of, of the stormwater fee. So I just, I, I think that's just something important to state, that the council would have the ability. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think, I think, I know in the resolution we said one year. But I'm, I'm assuming that we might have some flexibility to extend that phase in if we need to. But, but definitely correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, I would say that's a council decision on the, the cap or phase in or however you want to clarify it in terms of correction, because we will be refunding any bill that was paid in error. We'll make people, you know, we'll make people hold as soon as it, you know, comes to our attention and we can correct it. So I, I think that that would be reasonable to assume that any errors in the calculations, people will be corrected for the first year of the program. And if they choose not to apply or not to let us know until year two, we could certainly take that under advisement. But, you know, the goal would be to make sure that the correct fee was charged based on the actual reality on their property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more general questions? All right, now we get to the fun part. So, and I, I know, I believe our city attorney is still with us. So there may be some questions for him. I think Councilmember Kovar and Dibala are the only ones who submitted line edits that they wanted to consider tonight. We are voting on this tonight, but I think what I'd like to do, if it's okay with council, is to go through these changes because they're, instead of passing it and then amending it, because a lot of these, they're actual questions that come up. So I will keep track of the, the changes as we're going through. So if you're following along, we're on the first page, line 42 through 44. Councilwoman Dibala had some changes to this whereas clause. So whereas the council conducted a review of chapter 16.08 of the Tacoma Park Code concerning stormwater management fees and adopted a resolution on stormwater management policies and discussed the same during the following work sessions. Took out the words comprehensive, overarching and deleted principles and goals. Everybody okay with that change? Okay, again, I can't see everybody when I'm sharing my screen, so holler if you want me to stop. Okay, then not, unless somebody had something else, I'm not seeing anything else to discuss until we get down to. We're now in chapter 16.08.050, which is purpose of the fund.
Mayor, can I interrupt and go back to the definitions?
Yeah.
Line 27. Undeveloped property, I, I realized that we still had the original language in, in there. I think it's just slightly down the next page.
Did you say line 27? Because line 27?
Yeah, 27 of the following page.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So under undeveloped property.
I, oh here, 23, I have it as line 23, so.
Okay, my, oh, sorry about that. It says, it means any non-single family property resident which has one third or less of the base and of a base unit of impervious surface. Since we've changed the definition of base unit of impervious surface, we need to change that calculation. I also think that since the fee is now across the board, a tiered fee, it should include single family or non-single family. So I think the undeveloped property should say, means any property which has three quarters or less of the base unit. And now again, the base unit is 500. So previous, we used to have a base unit of 1,226. So that one quarter was about 400 some square feet. So this will continue to maintain that rough amount. And basically it means if you've got a big lot with a little gravel parking spot on it or a little metal shed, something less than 500 square feet, in fact, three quarters or less than 500 square feet, you wouldn't be charged a stormwater fee for that impervious area on the property that you'd have to hit at least three quarters of a base unit to receive that lowest fee of $25. So it just maintains consistency among the amount of impervious area that's exempt from paying the fee and it expands it to include any property rather than just non-single family property.
We, Mayor and Daryl, we would want that to be resident, any residential property, correct?
No, any property.
Yeah, I think.
Just be any property.
Okay.
So before a non-single, it was pulling out, you know, commercial institutional and, and now we're just adding single family to it. So it's really any.
So did I get, did I capture that right, Daryl?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? I see heads nod, all right. So then we go down to purpose of the fund, purpose of fund, line 20 and 21. This was rewritten to say evaluate the impact of stormwater runoff on private property within groups of private properties. I don't know if Councilman Dibala or Kovar had anything to say on this change.
I'll just note that this went through a few different versions with the input from Councilmember Dibala and from Ms. Braithwaite. And there have been language. The part that's deleted, city staff have maintained a list of identified problem areas, et cetera. That didn't seem appropriate for the purposes of the fund listing. So the point here is just this does permit the evaluation of stormwater runoff on private property and that's relevant to what we discussed during consideration of the resolution.
Anyone have any questions on this? Ms. Braithwaite, you're okay with this change? Okay, I'm moving on. Next were, I think, minor edits, additions under stormwater management fee and credit program, adding the words installations. And to line 35, a property owner has taken or made to reduce, I don't see anything there. Line 38, approved credit shall not exceed 50% of total fee assessed to property owner and shall be applied retroactively. Billing cycles provide the reasons for granting the approval remain for the duration of the billing.
So this is, this is when, and I know we've talked about it some already, but not specifically in going through the ordinance here. And it was just not entirely clear to me and I, and I don't think that inserting the word retroactive there is necessarily what we want, but my understanding, and I know it's discussed a lot, but I just want to make sure I've got this correctly. What the staff is suggesting is that the credits will be determined in the following year's bill. They will be granted, but that they will be credits for what a property owner had paid in the previous year. And that that process will just continue until that individual's credit is no longer about. If that's what we're saying, it seems a little bit unclear that we are saying that. But I, number one, we should make sure that's what we are saying. If, if everybody's in agreement with that, then the retroactivity, I'm not sure how we have to specify it, but maybe we can just confirm that that's what we're saying.
I will say that I'm, I'm actually confused by this language. So I need to know what the point is that, that you want.
Well, I thought it was confusing without the word in there, which is why I was attempting to clarify. My understanding is that what we're saying is if this year I've installed some stormwater control equipment and I pay my bill this year, then next year's bill, I'll get the credit for having it this year. And that next year's bill will be reduced by that amount. Then the third year, I'll get the credit again for having it next year. And each year you're going to get it retroactively. If that's what we're saying, that I would agree with.
Ms. Braithwaite, how would you prefer it to be?
Well, my understanding of retroactive is usually backwards, not forward. So the word retro to me goes backwards. So what we're saying is you apply, you go through the process, you get it granted and it goes forward. So your next billing cycle, you'll get that credit for as long as it lasts, one year, two year, three year. And then you'll need to reapply. But when you add the word retro, to me, it goes backwards to.
And then we would have to write a check out to them for the past year.
No, but so in each case, you get it for what you had the previous year. And if it finally stops and you don't, you, you eliminate your, your stormwater control equipment, you still might get one more credit, right? Because you had it previous year. If that's what we're saying, that's fine, we can drop the word retro.
For however many years as it is eligible for, we would, would issue that. If it's a three-year credit for the first year of the billing cycle, that'd be the first year, second year, third year, regardless of when you establish the program, your credit would start at the next bill.
Thank you.
Councilman Dibala, do you have, we're going to take out retroactively. Did you have something to say on that?
Yeah, I, what I would ideally like to see, and maybe I didn't explain this well earlier, is for people who already have something in place and it, and it meets the requirements that of, of the credit program, that they don't have to wait. Let me rephrase that, that they get acknowledged that in, in the total that they eventually pay or get paid back or whatever. or get paid back or whatever for this first year. And if they, and so, so you, so so somebody has something in place now, and then they're not going to see the value of that in their bill till the next billing cycle, and it would be one, two, three years, whatever, however many years. But they're still paying full freight this first year, and they're not getting an adjustment. But I think the retroactively, if you will, for what the, in this first year. So they're still paying full freight this first year. That's the part that I'm having.
But the thing is, we haven't put in place the criteria or the credit program yet.
Right, I understand that, and I understand that that we have to do one thing at a time. And I was just hoping that we could acknowledge in at some point in the bill, in the first year's total work that people have already done.
I I think that's awfully difficult because we also have to have tested and make sure it meets all the criteria. To say that the, it's tough to like affirm that four months ago, it also met the criteria. Or whatever the, however long it's, you know, that somebody was saying it's been there.
Well, but they are getting it from what they have this year, right? They'll just get that credit next year. That's what we're saying.
Right, right. We, we, I just think it's, it's a, it's a function of just this first year of the program. After the first year of the program, it ceases to be an issue. We just need to establish sequentially the various aspects of the program at year two. When someone applies, they will get that credit that year. So it's just, it's just this first year that you're going to have this delay before the credit gets attributed to the, to the property.
It's a one-year situation. See if there's any way that we can acknowledge that there has to be some delay, but is there some way to adjust for that in the first year's bill?
Given everything else that we're going to do in this from April on, I I don't see it being realistic.
But they still will get it for this year. They'll just get it next year, right?
Yes, they'll get it in the next year's bill. They won't get a reduction in their year one bill. It'll be their year two bill.
Well, no, I thought we were saying they will get it, but they'll get it next year.
Yeah, you're billed annually, so.
Right, but if if what Councilman Dibala is asking is.
Sure, they will get it eventually.
Right.
I get that.
Okay.
If someone is tied on money, the sooner that they get that acknowledgement of that credit, the better. That's why I was hoping it could be applied to the first year, even if it takes us a few months to to get through.
I guess, but the other thing too is to realize what we're talking about here, because the credit program itself is only up to fifty percent of the fee assessed. And if we have forty-four percent of of homeowners who are going to have less than a hundred and eight, I I'm just saying like, and and the chances that somebody's going to reach that fifty percent of credit. And we also have a scholarship program and money available for people who need it to offset their fees. I'm just trying to figure out if like what what do, what's the problem we're trying to solve? And if our staff is saying it's not feasible for them, given their capacity, they have to put this in place.
Well, so we haven't gotten to the scholarship program yet, and and if that goes in and stays in, then that might address.
We've talked about it, and the city manager has talked about it. I don't see why it wouldn't be in.
We, I will.
And yet it wasn't. So that's why I'm just making sure. Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know that it's, it has to be in here, but we have a process of trying to help out homeowners in all these different ways. So we'll make sure that it's it's. I I don't know exactly the language in here. I'm sorry.
So Councilman Dibala, is there a specific language you'd like to suggest for this evening for us to consider or?
Let let me see what, see what it says in the, in terms of the scholarship program, and maybe that will address the same, the same issue. So the word retroactive probably needs to come out because because what, in any case, that's not the right word.
I took it out.
Okay.
All right. And then so then the next change is on the next page, line one, there was the addition of July first, twenty twenty-one. Is that okay?
That to me seems overly optimistic, given the time it's going to take to create the regulations, to post and advertise the regulations in the comment period. But I think in, it would be the fall before we'd have regulations finalized for the credit.
So what's September first work then?
It's more more likely or October first. I'm thinking to how long it took us to get the tree ordinance regulations in place, and and those were fairly clear. I mean, we knew what we were going to do there. Here we, we don't.
We also, we also will be having a new city manager.
Yeah, which I put October. Is that okay? If we do it sooner, great, but it gives you till October. All right, I'm moving down. The next is, let's see, what section are we in here? This is at a minimum, the stormwater management fee credit programs, regulations shall. And this is line thirteen and fourteen, item E. Permit property owners who are previously awarded credit to reapply for a credit for the next approval period pursuant to the retroactive process described in subparagraph D two.
We don't need that anyway.
We don't need that, right? Because, okay. Take that out. All right, Councilmember Kovar, you're up on G. You had a question.
So there's a distinction between the credit and the appeal of the calculation, which comes up a little bit later. And so I would like to see an opportunity for property owners to appeal a decision on the granting of credit or on the terms of the granting of the credit if they think it's worth more. And I confess, I don't know exactly the best way to structure that language, but if if people agree, we could certainly do it. And so to me, there's a, there's two question here. This says, let's set up a process for applications, and then ideally be complete within thirty years of a complete application. If the answer is no, you know, you don't, the things you've done in the property aren't sufficient. Person, most people say, okay, fine, I gave it my best shot. If someone says, well, wait a minute, I've got some other documentation or some additional factors that weren't previously considered, they ought to have an opportunity to submit that.
Could that be, I I just have a question. Does that need to be in the ordinance, or could we have that as part of how we create the credit program? Because I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about that until I know more about how we're creating creating the credit program. That's all. I just, do we have to have it? The question is, do we have to have that here specified here that you can appeal the credit program? Or can we wait to flush out the credit program a bit more?
Well, if we don't say it, we're not going to have it, right?
No, I don't think that's true. We could build it into the credit program that you can appeal and then put in how, what that process would be.
I think the question, I think the question would be for the city attorney is if, does it need to be in the code? Or is it something for the regulations? And I don't know the, I don't know the answer on that.
The answer would be that if there is, if the council wants to mandate that there is a right of appeal, it needs to be in the ordinance. The regulations can flesh out what that process looks like. That does not, if the council does not put it in the ordinance, that does not preclude the regulations from containing the appeal. But the council would not be able to insist on it through the ordinance.
Well, I would propose just to make it really simple then, that we say establish a review process for applications with a right to appeal. That went feasible, we can do.
Like that? Anyone have any? Councilwoman Dibala, is that a new or old?
It's an old hint, but I actually don't, I I actually agree with the mayor. I'm not sure yet that we need a right to appeal in the code, and I think we can talk about it during the regulations. But I don't, it, that, that's, let's see what everybody else thinks.
All right, maybe we should do, yeah, sorry.
I was just going to say, to me, it complicates G to add though with a right to appeal. I would almost prefer if you wanted to have that specified, it be a separate thing. As you're, you've got a couple of things there. First, the application, ten, thirty days. So it just, to me, it's a, it confuses it. I would just.
We can't hear, Ms. Braithwaite, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Your mic's breaking.
Sorry, I was just going to say, if you want to man, you know, if the council wants to mandate an appeal, it might be more clear to have it as a separate item than.
We could have an H or an I that would just say that it will include a, an appeal of initial, of an initial decision on, on the credit. That's easier. I can see what you mean, because the thirty days might be confusing there. So you could establish a new I after the H.
You may want to follow something similar to what you did with some portion of the tree ordinance where you said we had to provide the justification or the reason why the credit wasn't granted. That could inform the applicant. So then if they had different information, they could then provide it, and that might get you closer to what you're going for rather than strict language of appeal.
Yeah, that sounds right.
If if a credit is rejected, the applicant will get a, you know, full explanation for why it wasn't granted and can reapply if if additional information is available.
That would be great.
All right. So I'm just going to put a note in here then that we're going to add the model on the language of the tree ordinance and do that for a second reading. Isn't that good?
Good suggestion, Ms. Braithwaite.
Thank you. And I'm seeing our city attorney nodding his head. So you remember, that's what we're doing.
I do.
Because I'm having flashbacks to the tree ordinance. Not a good thing. All right, then seeing no hands and moving on. Under assessment notices, B, Councilmember Kovar.
So I think there's a key question here, which is that we've all already agreed that for this year, everybody's going to get a letter, which in effect is an assessment notice, if you want to look at it that way, telling people what their the calculation for their impervious area is, et cetera. Everybody will receive that, and we've talked already a lot about how that will work. The question is, is that the only time they're going to get that? So I think there's a good argument for saying either every year or every X number of years that that should be sent because, look, a lot of people are going to get this the first year, not, maybe not really absorb everything in it. They'll end up paying whatever the amount is, and then they may focus on it more in the future. I mean, we're in the middle of a unprecedented period right now. So expecting everybody to absorb every kind of official communication they get during the pandemic and so on, maybe is a little bit unrealistic. So I think people ought to be, ought to receive, if not every year, periodically a notice from the city saying this is what you're charging. Why? We get that for our assessment for our homes every year. Even in the years when it doesn't change for three years, because that's how it's done. So that's, that's what I'm suggesting here.
So if I might, it it is a lot of work to do this. I would recommend that it certainly be done every time there's a re, a recalculation, which I think should be periodic, like every ten years. There's also should be an easy way for somebody to check their records. If you're in the county and you're not in the municipality, you can easily click on a button and look and see what that impervious surface is for your area that you're being charged for. So I would hope that over time, we would have the same kind of system for the city. But I I think that it's not able to be done on a, like in every one or every other year. I think that's too much work, and I, so I would recommend a periodic period, but of a longer duration.
Well, I guess I would just say two things. One, if there's an online system that, you know, the vast majority, as we've talked about in separate contexts, not everybody has access to to the internet, but if there's a way that people can check, but I I think it's a little bit of a stretch to say it can't be done because it's a lot of work, but people, it's work for people to understand it and to pay and and so on. And so I don't think that alone is, is the answer. Ten years is, in my opinion, far too long for that. So if there was an online system, how would that work? I mean, I understand it's not set up now, but somebody could check periodically.
Well, don't we, I'm sorry, I was going to say, but don't we have the interactive map? That can't.
Yes, we, we already have, we already have this information available. I do think that it's important for people to receive it at their home. I just think that it should, it should be at least every five years or longer. It's, there aren't that many changes on people's properties that having it every year would be a significant. I I just think that that, that ends up being a cost to the city that's not necessary for the kind of information that would get received.
Well, the interactive map, I think, just to be clear, is a different thing. It shows what you owe. What what the composition of the calculation.
I hear.
Which is something that would be in the assessment notes. So.
I'm, I'm thinking maybe we want to add language that says we'll reassess the impervious area every five years. And upon reassessment, the city will send a notice out to all property owners updating their their impervious area assessment and and maybe just establish it, you know, basically the council set what they think their frequency should be for the city's reassessment of impervious area. Because we went way, way, way too long between the initial one and now. So I think it would be good to say five years, ten years, whatever it is. I I tend to agree that five years is probably better. Or it could be three years if if the city wanted that. Yeah, I I did want to also note that on line seven there for property classified as other developed, again, that's a vestige of the original ordinance, so we should probably delete that because we're no longer differentiating between single-family and other developed since everybody will be treated the same.
Sorry, Darrell, before we get there, hold on, let me, I just want to, I don't want to, sorry. I just want to make sure I I keep track of of the changes we're making. So, so on councilman, the point Councilmember Kovar is raising regarding sending out periodic notices. Councilmember Kovar, would it be okay if language was added that reassessments, re, or reassessments were going to occur every five years and a notice sent out then?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just going to make a note that that's language we're going to add. Unless other people, I'm not seeing other hands. I can't spell anymore. So that will take care of that comment. All right. So Darrell, now we were down to line seven.
Seven, number two, I think that line could be deleted because we no longer need to classify other or other developed versus single-family. It's all treated the same.
So if we did, but it's not just deleting that line because that has two, it has A and B underneath it. So you're saying all of this would get deleted?
No, A and B can remain. So basically, it basically, it's telling you what's going to be included in the notice. So the impervious area and the method by which the impervious area was determined. So I think that's.
Do they become, but do they then become two and three?
That could be, yeah.
I'll work it out, Mayor.
All right, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put a note here and say, delete this, and then you figure out where that goes. Okay. All right. Rolling on, Councilmember Kovar. We're into the section when the fee is payable, interest and penalties, lien on real property, abatement of small amounts.
This provision and a couple of others are still tied, it seems to me, in reading it, to when we used to issue the stormwater bills as a separate fee that was payable directly to the city. This doesn't sort of embrace the new system through which people pay, as noted previously, as part of their property tax. And so you know, it's not, it's not a question of thirty days. It's just they have to pay their property tax or their escrow, or those of us who don't have a mortgage anymore just write out a check. But I don't think this system is described here really on point anymore.
Councilmember, that may be the case. We do, of course, have, the stormwater fee goes to some properties that don't pay property tax. And so I would want to just make sure that, that it gets covered.
Okay, so that's just something we'll check for a second reading.
And there are two other spots that have a similar thing. So that's just, they, and they're, they're flagged here.
Okay.
We'll get to them.
All right, but then we were adding D. Tell us about adding D in this section.
Right, so this gets back to what we were talking about previously. And we've discussed it in the past, I think, too. So the question is, and this is what I, what I picture, a resident who bought a home in the city. In many cases, it would be many decades ago when properties were relatively less expensive. The home is paid off, they're retired, they're on a fixed income. And we even may have had a public comment about that earlier tonight. And it's not a credit issue and it's not a appeal of the calculation or anything like that. It's just, here's a person for whom, maybe they have a fairly large impervious service or whatever reason. And now they're gonna have to pay $300 instead of 92 or 108. And they're on a fixed income. This fits in with a lot of the other discussions we had recently on tax credits and so on. I think it makes sense to have a, an ability to, whether you call it scholarship or whatever you call it, or a credit or an abatement, that, that be possible.
Yeah, I, I think this is fine.
Yeah, I was wondering if it might better be in a different section, like the section that has the imposition of the stormwater management fee rather than this one, which is really addressing interest and penalties and liens and kind of failure to pay. So we may want to pull it out and put it, put it in a different.
I'm just gonna say, check the section and Ms. Braythwaite and Mr. Cornberg, that's your job.
Yeah.
Um, okay. And then I think the next one was my.
Yeah, and I just think the language shouldn't be abatement because I think that means something else, probably a reduction of the fee.
Yeah, it's a reduction of the fee. And, and I think that that's something that I would like to leave general because some might be of, you know, a full elimination, some might be partial.
And, and I would like to ask if this is the so-called scholarship fee, how it applies to folks who have to pay a higher fee, but they know that, that, that they're pretty sure. It's a situation we were talking about earlier. So, so are, so lower income property owners, we're not defining that now? We're leaving that open?
We have a working understanding of that through our LMI programs, both through the housing department as well as the sustainability program. So we do.
And so that's what, roughly?
85% of the median Montgomery County median.
All right, so that might not get to the kinds of folks I was thinking about earlier.
Are you thinking about a general hardship waiver or something like that, councilmember Devol?
Yeah, let, rather than take everybody's time now, let me talk it through and think it through a little bit more.
I think the next one, under request for correction, that is this, no, this is different, sorry. Councilmember Kovar.
I think it's a similar situation where they're not really getting the
Oh, I see, yeah. Okay, so we need to just correct that. Okay.
Right.
And then in B. Is that the same thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so then the last thing in C. C and D are related, I think. This gets to this question of what, this is nearly end, everybody, what somebody would need to do if they believe there is an error in the impervious service calculation. And so at present, what's in C, D would be new, what's in C applies mainly to, or has applied exclusively to commercial, industrial, institutional, or larger multifamily properties. And it may make sense in those cases. Some are small, I suppose, some small commercial businesses. But in most cases, you're talking about larger entities. And so perhaps the registered engineer professional surveyor makes sense, I think. And, and maybe even paying for that is tax deductible, it's a business expense, I don't know. But for a single family owner, the cost of hiring one of those professionals is gonna exceed any financial benefit, most likely that they could get from seeking a correction. So it kind of becomes almost a meaningless thing for them to have to do that. So I think if we specify in C, then it doesn't apply to single family. And then D says, well, for a reasonably reliable method, they can challenge it. You know, that could include some documentation, but not the hiring of, of one or more professionals together. C and D seem to work pretty well with that correction in C. I hope that's clear.
If I may, on, on this one, I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of separating out single family property owner as opposed to just any property. I think that there are times when there may be simple clarifications for a business owner as well as a residential owner to get something that would be appropriate to say, yes, I accept this answer without having to go through a full survey. But I think in both cases, there's also going to be complex issues. And, and in those cases, I think that it's, I, I think that there needs to be, it's times that kind of survey work done. Unfortunately, Tacoma Park is a weird place when it comes to properties. We've got interesting history and topography. And at times, you know, I've seen over the years, many times when adjoining, adjoining property owners have overlapping lots of plans that don't, you know, that don't jive up. And so sometimes it takes some extra work to figure that out. And I, I think that we obviously would try to work around that. So most people don't have to, to pay extra, but at certain times, a survey's gonna be required.
But how does D connect to that then? Because D says there's a, some type of exemption just for single family.
I don't think it should. I, I, I think it should take out the single family residences portion.
Well, I still think we should say, a property owner may be required to hire a a registered engineer or professional surveyor. But in the city manager's discretion, some other method can be found for, for any property buying.
I think, I, I think what if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, that the issue is in line 11 right now where it says must include a certification. And what I think I'm hearing from councilmember Kovar is that that seems, that must seems overly burdensome. And if I, if I hear that, if I think I heard the city manager correctly, it sounded like that could be a may include instead of a must include. Right?
That's my, I, I don't think I have a problem with changing that to May. I think at some points, you know, it would be a requirement, but it, I think it is a case by case situation.
But so if we do May instead of must, then I'm fine dropping the other language there. But then D, I think we just want to say if the city manager's discretion, a fee may be modified.
You know, I, I would like to, I would like to double check this after tonight because it's late with the city attorney. Should I do this right?
Well, just to be clear, D was not my suggestion originally.
I understand.
I think one of the issues with this is, is to make sure that people aren't onto the assumption that they can just tell the city, hey, there's something wrong with this. You've got to figure it out.
Right.
We're not going to figure it out. The property owner needs to figure it out or provide us information that, that, that addresses their, their point. So, you know, the city won't hire a survey crew or do a title deed search. You know, that, that's gonna have to be on the property owner.
But it sounds like we can just, we can change the must to a may. And I think that addresses what everyone is saying.
And then you may want to take the single family residence out of, out of D.
Excellent. Who's got a hand up? Councilmember Devol?
I, I was just going to agree that May works for me.
All right, anyone else have any? Let me, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and save this. So I have all the changes. Councilmember Devol?
Yes, before we vote, I just want to get a sense from other residents now that I can, I mean, other councilmembers now that I can see your faces. On that one section where folks would get a credit, but they'll get it next year for the work that they've done in the past, this, this one year gap we're in. Councilmember Kovar said, well, and you'll get it, you'll just get it next year. And that was okay. And I, I was pushing to have it be more immediate if possible. And is there any way to just, does anybody else have anything to say about that or agree, disagree, don't care? I'm just trying to get a sense of if I'm the only one on this. Silence.
I, I guess I, I'll jump in. And I think for me is, Councilmember Circe had her hand up, sorry. Go ahead.
No worries. For me, it's a matter of being practical from an implementation standpoint. So in a practical sense, like if, if we had all of the people imaginable and we could set up a credit program and review all of everyone's property to verify the, the actual amount of impervious surface and be able to, you know, come up with the structure to verify, you know, the credit program and whether or not what people had previously is, you know, applies to the credit. Yes, that could be done within the first year. That is not, that's not realistic. It's just not realistic. And so I think best case scenario, in year one, we focus on verifying and having residents feel comfortable with the estimates of the amount of impervious surface that they have while we are working on establishing criteria for a credit program. And then we could decide, once we've identified what that credit program will consist of, what is the period that would be applicable, right? We, all of that stuff can be figured out once you have that credit program established. And I think it's okay for it to kind of kick in year two. And then we decide, yes, we want, if you did something last year, we want to know about it. Apply and we will see if you qualify for this credit. Don't think that it's practical to think that we would be able to do all of this in year one. That's just my, my two cents.
And yeah, and I'll just, I completely, I have 100%, thank you for saying that because I'm not sure I can strong it together as clearly. And also, as Ms. Braythwaite said, that it's, the credit program is also something that people, it's not supposed to be, you know, forever. And so it is something that someone has to reapply for, we have to confirm. And there's time limits on it. And it's, and it's a percentage also. So I think getting this all in place, and as Councilmember Circe said, I, I agree with that. Councilman Kostick?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I agree with where you're coming from, Councilmember Devola. And I, I agree with you that I would like to have it in place, but it seems like it might just not be possible right away. What I do think is gonna be necessary, though, is I think there are a lot of complexities and confusions of different things. We talked about it one way, it made changes. And I just want to make sure that as we communicate with residents, we're just really, really clear. I think it's gonna really require a very well thought out communication strategy to how we reach people in the city and explain this process and have answers. And the better we can do that upfront, I think the fewer questions we will actually have. So just want to make sure we do that as we move forward.
And I'm not gonna be surprised if a number of residents come forward during the corrections process and expect that this is a correction. Well, I have these rain, rainwater management features, so I want my bill corrected. Yeah, I agree on the communication strategy. All right, well, thank you. I just wanted to get a sense of where everybody else is at on that.
Great. I emailed to everybody the the updated ordinance reflecting the changes that we discussed tonight. There's still a couple of outstanding things that we just had to finalize for second reading. But would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilmember Devola, do I have a second? Second. Councilmember Siemens, thank you. Any further additional comments or questions? Amendments? All right, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Devola?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, um, good, thank you, everyone. Our, they'll come back next week for the second reading. And then the next item we have now is a second reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with a housing initiative partnership to use $200,000 from the housing reserve fund for a project on Lincoln Avenue. And I will.
Ma'am, it's a, it's a single reading ordinance. You said a second reading.
Oh, sorry. I really, I'm looking at it, too. Like, I'm actually reading. So.
Hopefully, hopefully we wrote this correctly. I'm very excited to bring to you another step forward in our way of implementing the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. Ms. Wiggins is here to tell us, tell you about this project. I'm particularly happy about this project for several reasons. One is, it's helping build a new partnership with a new housing nonprofit. It's also really distributing around our community an opportunity for homeownership. And I think it's the term that is being used at the county is attainable homeownership. And so as we deal with missing middle and other kinds of housing needs in our community, I'm really excited that we may have this, a step forward here. I do want to remind the council about the economic situation in Tacoma Park, which is that the white population, white households in Tacoma Park earn approximately $146,000 a year of median income. While as the not white population households have a median income of about $46,000. And we have an enormous gap. And the way that we need to address that is some middle housing of which this is an opportunity. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Wiggins to describe this opportunity that is before you this evening. Ma'am?
Dawn, good evening and thank you so much for having me this evening. Grace Wiggins, I'm the housing manager for the city of Tacoma Park. And as the city manager mentioned, this is a, another opportunity that we're bringing before the council. This is a single family home located at 320 Lincoln Avenue. It's a rental property that was a part of our licensing program. We were notified, as you'll see in the cover page, we were notified by the tenant that she was offered an opportunity to purchase the property. We worked very closely with her for almost two months to help her understand what was going on. But also, she was working behind the scenes to get financing. Eventually got the financing, but then determined that the repairs and other maintenance of the property would just be too overwhelming. And so she eventually declined the offer to purchase. She will be leaving the property at the end of this month, moving to a rental property with her son, another rental property with her son. And it presented an opportunity for the city to evaluate another affordable homeownership opportunity. And as the city manager referenced, we actually made a new partnership through an organization called Housing Initiative Partnership. They are a nonprofit. They're a very large nonprofit that operates with a home headquarters in Prince George's County. For the past 23 years, they have an arm of their organization that focuses primarily on the development of multifamily rentals and affordable homeownership. And affordable homeownership. And when presented with the opportunity to possibly redevelop this property, they not only jumped at the opportunity, but. Highlight something that the city manager mentioned, they referenced that they have never worked on a project in 23 years in Montgomery County. And it's not because they don't want to, because they cover both Montgomery County and Prince George's County. It's because they've never been offered the opportunity to do so. And so the majority of the work that they do is in Landover, Prince George's County, and they do wonderful work. They also have a signature project that some folks on the council may be familiar with. It's a lead silver. Standard project, which is an artist. Housing, it's called Renaissance Square. Developed in 2008, and as you know, Hyattsville has really become the, the in place to be, and they've done a lot of hard work on that main. Drag to ensure that there. Is brand new housing that's available, that is affordable. And so I believe this project is consistent with the 2019 Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan that the council passed in October. And I think it brings us a little bit closer to what we're hoping to do in terms of the redevelopment of properties. This is currently a two bedroom, one bathroom home. It's quite small. And in the plan for the redevelopment of the property, HIP, the acronym, HIP. Has proposed to expand to at least three bedrooms and two bathrooms. And they're either going to build out or up. This week, they had the opportunity to come with an architect and engineer. To look at the property to see what the expansion possibilities are. In addition, they had a lead and asbestos inspector at the property as well. There will be a lot of abatement of lead and asbestos and with our. With all of our projects, we have a requirement that our partners focus in on. Energy efficiency and sustainability and HIP is no different. They are focused on those same issues as well. They want to ensure that new homeowners come into properties that are turnkey, but more importantly, that they're energy efficient and that families are able to thrive in these properties without. Trying to manage projects. And this isn't a project home, this would be a fully renovated property. They will go down to the studs, they're going to upgrade the HVAC system. Currently, there is. I think their window air conditioners. Want to say that there's, you know, there's a bunch of old equipment in the home. But it, it's in need of some major renovations and they've put together a budget. And which brings me to what the budget looks like. And it's a preliminary budget, but I did want to share it with the council tonight. We're going to be refining it and I'll talk a little bit about what the refining will involve. So. Overall, the budget is close to about $795,000 to do the full renovation, including the acquisition cost. So that's the all in number. The $200,000 that we're proposing that the council dedicate from the housing reserve fund will go to subsidize the property. And as we replicate what we did with Habitat for Humanity, that will go as a subordinate lien on the property. Which means that we're going to be building in our own stake in the property, but more importantly, we'll be building in. An opportunity, obviously, to make this property affordable. We're looking at. An area median income of up to 120%. This will be closer to workforce housing than it will be in our first project. And I think it's important. And you all will remember from the conversations in 2019 that we want to create housing at different price points. And so we were lucky enough to partner with Habitat for Humanity in our first project. And that brought us at 80% of the area median income, and that's, those are two homes. And we're not going to always be able to work with Habitat, although I would love to have them on all of our projects, but sometimes the numbers aren't going to work out. But we also want to make sure that we're offering affordable housing to folks that have slightly more income than the 80% AMI. And this project is our very first where we're going to be able to do that. In addition, HIP has been able to tap into some money that. Is, was provided to them by the state, which will be forgivable money, so it will not go as a lien on the property. It's roughly about $175,000 that was dedicated for work near the purple line, and this project is 1.2 miles from the purple line. So we've been able to take advantage of some extra funding through just building this relationship and kind of talking through what all the possibilities look like. You'll see attached to your packet, a resolution from the board of HIP. They met on Monday and we're very excited to sign off on this partnership. And I'll take a breath there because at 10:41, I know there have to be a lot of questions about this, about this project. So I'll take a breath there.
And Ms. Wiggins, I'll, I'll just, I'll jump in with what the council's being asked, which is to allocate $200,000 from our housing reserve. Which is about $650,000 right now. It will require a budget amendment to just move that $200,000 into the expense account that's saying you're expending $200,000. So that's something that would be coming back before you. But we do need to, because of the time constraints of this process, have an action on this item this evening.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
Ms. Wiggins, thank you for your work on this project. I am supportive of it. Question if. The new buyer, for whatever reason. Can't stay in the home because a job change or a family member's sake, and they want to rent the home out. Is that permissible under the deal that we're putting together?
So these properties and all the properties that I'll bring before the council, these are primary homes, primary residential homes. So properties will not be rented out. There will be, and I didn't mention this, and it's, it's definitely worth pointing out. We're going to talk about a minimum of 15-year affordability covenant on the property to ensure that there's no flipping. This is a. Neighborhood where we're seeing a lot of appreciation. And so we don't want someone to buy it to only flip it and take the proceeds and leave our community. So there will be an affordability covenant that's placed on the property and it won't be a rental. And so we're very careful in, in terms of all of our agreements, even with our down payment assistance program, which is a small amount of money. That, you know, we monitor this and we want to make sure that, you know, city dollars and any other dollars that are dedicated to these types of programs are going to be used. To speak directly to your question, Councilmember Smith, and I think it's a great question. So what are the protections? The one thing that HIP does very well, and they actually are a part of a consortium of nonprofits that are working with Montgomery County now in connection with COVID-19. They do housing counseling. They are a HUD certified first time home buyer counseling agency. They have financial coaching. And they also have a very strong track record of working with homeowners or new homeowners and first time home purchasers. To ensure that they're set up in a way so that they don't fail. And so we're going to make sure that all those supports are in place and HIP will not leave the scene once the property is sold. They will be there to provide support for this family to ensure that there are no defaults.
Good. What about situation if? Do we need a first right of refusal? I mean, I know we have a lien in second position, but is a first right of refusal a good backup?
I don't think so, because with this affordability covenant, and let me say this, this is a different program than Habitat for Humanity. You'll remember the very first project, Habitat described their model. They are the lender, they are the financer. They have a shared equity model, which means that if you leave prior to the 30 years, you get back a certain percentage. We didn't want to put that level of restriction on this property because it's a different property. And so with a 15-year covenant, I think we'll be able to cover it. In the event they want to sell, they would only be able to sell to someone who also meets the same criteria that we've established. 120% of the area median income. And we can, and for the most part, we can do a little bit more than what we did with Habitat, which I think is a bonus for the city. Number one. We can give a preference or a priority to someone who is currently a tenant in the city of Tacoma Park, which is something that we couldn't do with the Habitat properties. And more importantly, we have more ability to help craft what we want to see in terms of not only this property, but other properties. Moving forward, because Habitat, again, has a very specific model. There's no sweat equity in this, although that's really great for some of our families. It won't be relevant. But it will give us the flexibility that we want to see in terms of moving some of our homeowners or renters into homeownership.
And I do hope that we give a preference to renters in the city. Especially for those wards that have large renter populations.
I'll quickly say this, Councilmember Smith, I want to give a preference to people who are renters. I also want to give a preference to people who work for the city of Tacoma Park.
Excellent.
And someone in your ward, David Borden, who I'd spoken with about opportunities for nonprofit professionals. Those are not high paying jobs. If you're at the, the leadership, within the leadership. And so we want to encourage more nonprofit professionals to look at these houses as options. I just don't want to limit it to just our rental pool. And many of those folks, unfortunately, are also in the rental pool. And want to, you know, want to move up and want to stay in our community, but just can't afford to move into homeownership.
David does great work. I appreciate everything he's doing, Board five, and you've got to support Princeton alum. Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Kostick?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wiggins, for your work on this. I'm excited about. The, the opportunity to do this when we have not had this opportunity before and the opportunity to really build these new partnerships and. You know, offer an opportunity to do this in Montgomery County for the first time, which is really exciting. I think it's also great that there will be energy efficiency components to this. That's an added benefit. And it really seems to me to fill the homeownership gap that we, we have with being able to provide that opportunity. I also just want to give a shout out to the property owners who own the property now. They are long time Tacoma Park residents who also. Own a house they've lived in for many years, not too far away from this property. And I know they are committed to affordable housing and these issues. So. Appreciate them as well. And I think this seems like a really, really positive opportunity for us.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar and then DiBalla?
Yeah, just two quick questions. Thank you, Ms. Wiggins, for bringing this forward. I do support it. One of the staff separately, not for tonight, could you send really an accounting of the. Housing fund and how we got to the number that we're at now, because I exchanged an email with Ms. Wiggins, but we didn't have a lot of time. I just didn't think that we were. At that number, that's all. So just be good to have an accounting, how I got there. But as for this project. My one question, we talked about this a bit on the phone, if you could say a few more words about why the 120 of area median income. Now, I know this house. Will end up costing below the median. Home price in the city, so that's good. That's what we're trying to promote. But if you can say a few words about where that, and the significance of where that. AMI number comes from and why, in this case, it's a little higher than the other one. That would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Kovar. I think that's a really great point. I think there are a couple of things that are in play here. And the easy answer to this is, it's because of the acquisition costs and the work that needs to be done. And we cannot keep it affordable. We're going to be purchasing the property. It's been offered to us at $450,000. Which seems like a lot of money, but in our, in our region, that is just absolutely not a lot of money. The average, and I wanted to give this to the, the council for the record, the median home price in 2020 in Tacoma Park was $675,000, and that was in 2020. And so. It's going to cost more. We're doing more to the property. And so the higher the acquisition costs and the higher the renovation costs. It's really pushing it outside of whatever a subsidy, whatever subsidy could be provided. By the city and the provider together. So we're all throwing in $200,000 will get us closer to somewhere between $450,000 upon completion. And the top end could be a little over $500,000. And so we want to make sure that folks can take out a mortgage. I mean, it would not involve our $200,000. They'd be taking out a mortgage of somewhere around $500,000. And that is kind of a higher, well, it is a higher percentage. And we're looking for people. If, if you remember with the Habitat property, we're looking for 30%, that folks are using 30% of their gross income for. Housing. And so if we start kind of jimmying around with those percentages, then it's going to really become unaffordable. And so up to 120% of the AMI will take us, and I have a chart to share with you and I can send that out tomorrow. But it will bring us to the point that we will get someone who will be around that 30% of their gross income.
If you went substantially below that level, you'd be, the risk would be someone's going into that home who may not be able to afford to, to, to keep it.
One of the things that, and you'll see in the. The resolution from the HIP board, they may place two conditions on the sale of the property in the deal with Tacoma Park. Number one, that the property be sold to a first time home buyer. And number two, that it is no higher than 120% of the AMI. Historically. HIP works within 80% of the AMI. And that's because they're dealing with properties in Prince George's County, usually at the lower end. And they're acquiring properties at $175,000. And so they're, you know, just these additional acquisition costs and the renovation really put it in a different league.
That's great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilman DiBalla?
Yeah, thank you. This is, thank you for the presentation, Ms. Wiggins. This has been. You've answered a lot of the questions that I had posed earlier. My, my point is slightly different, which is the question of notifying single family homeowners. Who want to rent in the future. So our right of refusal ordinance covers rental properties, including single family. That may not be, may or may not be widely known amongst single family homeowners who are renting. And I want to just, as I did last year, just before the pandemic, want to plant the notion that we really need to do some outreach to. Single family homeowners in particular to make sure, single family homeowners who rent or who are about to rent. To make sure that they understand the implications of that, that they might wind up in this situation. I, I also totally appreciate the property owner and the real estate agent in this case. Trying to be flexible about this. But I'd like it for there not to be surprises in the future. So. I really, I like the structure of this deal. I think that we. With the, with the money from the. American Relief Act helping us to use COVID, to, to pay for COVID actions in the future. You may recall, we didn't put into the housing reserve because we used that for COVID. Well, okay, so now we don't have to do that. We have, I feel comfortable with, with using the money. I just want to emphasize that we, we want to. Notify families, rent, single family homeowners that are renting and are about to rent, so that they know that when they go to sell, they, that there'll be. Potentially opportunities such as this for them for, by a first refusal. Thank you.
I think you're making a great point, Councilmember DiBalla, and I'll quickly say, not only do I think we need to do that level of outreach, but in more. Equally, I think we need to notify tenants of the option that may be available to them. And one of the things that we hear a lot when properties, rental properties go on the open market is, what do I do? It's almost like being splashed by cold water. People don't know what those next steps are because they're getting a surprise offer to buy their home. So I think outreach needs to be done across the board, but I agree, I want to make sure that single family homeowners are aware that when they have a rental property. That it could be subject to the city investigating it for the purpose of purchasing it to create affordable homeownership.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Wiggins, for fitting this into your busy schedule. Yeah, it's like, okay, you had time for another little project, right?
Nothing but time here in, in the city of Tacoma Park.
There you are. Anyways, I just want to thank you for recognizing this opportunity and moving on it so quickly and, and getting it structured in place. I think it sounds fantastic. I'm glad that you have paid attention to the council priorities and, and found something that really makes sense. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, and getting late, and I know you're very busy, so I'll just add my thanks as well to this project. And to thank the, the homeowners like Councilwoman Kostick did. And I just, I, I also really like the idea that we are partnering with another organization, as Councilmember Kovar has stressed over the last couple of years, since we did our strategic plan in 2019. We're not going to, you know, we're not going to create affordable housing in our community by ourselves. We need strong partners. And I love the fact that, you know, this is an organization that is also working with first time home buyers and sticking with them. So I think that is a great model, and it's, it's really exciting that this is their first opportunity to work in Montgomery County. And I think when all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed and we're moving forward with this, we need to make sure everybody knows about this project and the work that we're doing in the city of Tacoma Park on this and all the good work that you're doing in your department. So I'll just say thank you very much for that. All right, who would like to move this resolution? Councilwoman Kostick? Councilwoman Kostick, Councilwoman Searcy, he can second it. Any amendments, changes? All right, seeing none. Oh, the clerk called the vote.
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Nabala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Searcy.
Yes.
And Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, terrific. Thank you very much, Ms. Wiggins. All right, the chief is up next. We are now moving into our work sessions. We have two work sessions tonight. First is the police department's annual report, and then we'll go on to our continued discussion on committees. So I will turn it over to the chief now.
Thank you. I know more about stormwater than I ever thought I would know. Good evening, councilmembers and residents. It's my honor to present the Tacoma Park Police Department's annual report. The purpose of this annual report is to provide information about our police department, about crime in the city of Tacoma Park, accomplishments of the police department, and explain how every individual can partner with the police department to make our community safer. I really want to start out by thanking the men and women of the Tacoma Park Police Department for their hard work and dedication in 2020. You'll find no better team of dedicated employees, and it's my honor and privilege to work with them. I'm also very excited about our new staff. In 2020, we hired eight new police officers and three professional staff. In the last three years, we've hired almost 30 new staff members. Our staff, our officers come from various backgrounds and ethnic groups. Our staff members speak six different languages with numerous officers fluent in Spanish. I'm also proud to say that our police department staff are almost, almost a mirror image of the demographics of the city of Tacoma Park. I think staff members bring a guardian mentality to policing. They are people who value community and service. In 2020, our city and our nation faced challenges of a global pandemic and a national outcry for reform in a public, of our public safety system. Several high profile incidents involving police officers using force that resulted in the deaths of African Americans and Latinx residents sparked protests across our country and a call for reform of public safety in our country. I and the Tacoma Park Police Department embrace this call for change. It is long overdue, and we review what works and what does not work in our current public safety model. As I've said a number of times, and councilmembers and the mayor has said, this involves taking a holistic view of public safety, not just police, but public safety. It also involves not only your view of policing, education, housing, mental health care, employment, and several other factors that impact crime and quality of life in our communities. We look forward to working with the recently created Public Safety Task Force to create a public safety model that works for all of our residents. I was really excited to see the quality of the, of the, the task force members last night. It was really amazing to see the wealth of background and knowledge of the task force. So I'm really looking forward to working with them. We will be providing the task force the comprehensive data on arrests, citation stops, criminal activity for the last five years. This data will have a breakdown of the demographics of individuals arrested and stopped, location of contacts, residency of individual stops, arrest by charge, traffic stop by charge, number of warnings versus citations issued to individuals broken down by race and gender, and much more information. Our goal is to release this, this information frequently to the public. We really wanted to give the, the task force an opportunity to take a look at the information and give us recommendations on how to best distribute the information on a regular basis. We expect the full data from the last five years to be released publicly in the near future. In 2020, the city of Tacoma Park saw a 14% increase in Part One crimes reported to the city. This is not a surprise. I've said that every time I've talked to the council and talked to residents, we've seen a drastic increase in crime. The increase was mainly due to an increase in larcenies and auto thefts. This trend is not unique to our agency. The pandemic has limited resource to many of our residents, which has resulted in some having to resort to petty crimes. Some of these individuals have never been involved in criminal activity previously. But because of the pandemic and the lack of resources, it's their only outlet. We work closely with our allied, allied partners to track crime trends and cross border incidents, as we always have. We found a few individuals that have been responsible for multiple crimes in Tacoma Park and surrounding jurisdictions. This is not something that's outside the door. I give you an example, a recent in progress theft from auto arrests led to the closure of over 15 previous theft cases. In a many crime prevention and crime fighting, everyone knows it's a regional effort, and that's essential for our community as well. We find in our annual report several notable arrests made by our staff, several involving a bank robbery, armed carjacking, murder, attempted murders, a rape, and several robberies were solved by our staff. These were, these arrests were made as a result of the hard work by our patrol staff responding to the call, interviewing witnesses, gathering evidence, and our criminal investigation detectives' tireless work in investigating crime. Our crime analyst and officers can view real time and historical data from our neighboring jurisdictions as well as communicate with our allied agencies via radio directly. This is really important for real time crime prevention. Like I say, this, this cross border communication and collaboration is essential to reducing criminal activity and solving crimes. However, to have a real lasting impact on criminal activity, we must look at the core issues impacting criminal activity, lack of educational opportunities, jobs, housing, and mental health care. Until we get to the root of those problems, we're going to continue to see crime, in my opinion, with the, with the result of the pandemic increasing. You know, the Tacoma Park Police Department is committed to taking a holistic review of the public safety model in Tacoma Park. We're committed to providing a public state, public safety while upholding the rights and dignity of all residents. This is really important. We want every contact to be respectful and, 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 and have that guardian approach. We don't want to be the oppressors, we want to be the helpers. Now, this involves fostering a culture of transparency and accountability. Good, bad, or indifferent, you're always going to get the full story from us. We use frequent and timely communication via social media and press releases to convey information to our residents. We're committed to holding, committed to community policing, collaborative problem, problem solving with all of our community stakeholders, especially our youth. One of my main initiatives when I became the police chief was to build better partnerships with our youth. You know, the city of Tacoma Park really appreciates the support from all of our community members. You know, Tacoma Park is not lacking in residents that give input, and we really appreciate that because it helps us make that, make us better. With that, I'm open to questions from, from the council.
Great. Thank you, Chief. I know one question came up last night during the task force, and I know the department's been working on this, but I think people may be interested in it in the releasing data and having data broken down by race and ethnicity on either traffic stops and other things like that. And I know the department's been working on that, but I don't know if you wanted to speak to where you are on that and when that information will be available.
Absolutely. It was extremely important to us to break down this information. As the members of the task force said last night, we cannot take a holistic approach and a holistic review of the police department without having this data. So we're in the final stages of putting it together. I, I was really amazed by what I've seen as far, as far as how interactive it is. I've compared it to other agencies. So we anticipate presenting that to the task force for the next couple of weeks. We're also, at the same time, going to prevent it to the chief's advisory board. The purpose of that, for them to be able to review us and give us, give us recommendations on the best way to present that information to the public. We wanted to allow them to weigh in. We would anticipate putting that information out shortly after the, the task force and the chief advisor, advisory board are able to review it. The goal is, on a continuous basis, to put this information out. And we put out an annual report, but as you know, our annual report does not include that information. So what we're planning on doing is coming up with a schedule to put out that information, whether or not that's quarterly, whether or not that's monthly. You know, that's something I think the task force needs to weigh in on, on what is the best way to get that information to the public. But, you know, I think what, what I've seen thus far is you're going to see a trend and a reduction of arrests made by our officers. You're going to see a trend in a reduction of traffic stops. You're going to see targeted enforcement. And what you're going to see is a lot of our black and brown people are having less contact with the police. But, you know, I look forward to re, releasing that data. I look forward to the task force being able to review it, and obviously the public to be able to review it as well.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilmember Smith.
Chief, I want to thank you for all the work that you're doing in the department. I really appreciate the, the new hires. They're more reflective of the city. I think that's fantastic. I don't know if you have the answer to this question, but how would, if you had a chance to try to reach the people that are having the most difficulty before you touch them, how can we touch them or other elected officials in the area try to get support to these people so that they are not engaged in criminal activity? I don't know if that's too big of a question, if you haven't even considered it. But, I mean, once someone has paper on them, so to speak, their lives can be changed forever. So how can we, if it's even possible, stop that from happening?
I absolutely think it's possible, and I think that that's something that the task force needs to examine. As I said in my original presentation, public safety is about taking that holistic approach. It's about providing educational opportunities. It's about providing housing. It's about providing opportunities for our youth early on so they don't have to resort to criminal activity. You know, they have opportunities to feel good about themselves in school. They have opportunities to feel good about themselves with jobs. You know, they have opportunities to have a nice house where they can go home and feel wanted. All of these things are so important. So when we talk about crime prevention, it starts early on. It starts with our families and getting in those families in need and giving them the resources they need. But also with the people that have already fallen into the criminal justice system, taking away the stigma of a criminal offense and allowing people to rebound from mistakes. Because if you can't, don't give people opportunities to succeed, and then they fall into the trap of criminal activity. There needs to be a mechanism to get them out of that trap. So when we talk about public safety, we need to talk about our criminal justice system. We need to talk about our laws. We need to talk about what we are putting an emphasis on. Is it really important that we arrest somebody for a dime back? Is it really important that we do some of the things that we're doing that are giving people criminal records and disproportionately people of color? You know, if, if that's where it starts. So, so yes, I truly believe that we can, as a society, make these changes. But it's not just going to involve police. It is going to involve society as a whole. I don't know if the council remembers, when the officer Stuart Archaplan gave her, her session on, on the history of policing. She talked about how to solve policing. And if police are the agents of a racist society, we are not going to solve our problems. So there's a bigger picture here that I absolutely think. If you're asking what can council members and what can community members do to help change this problem? Invest in educational opportunities. Invest in new jobs. Invest in housing, like, you know, Grace Wiggins was talking about earlier. All of these things are important. You know, so it, it is a group effort, and I really hope that the task force takes a look at mental health issues that impact so many people in our community. I don't know anyone in the, that's not a family member, that's impacted, myself included, by mental health issues, that we have to provide treatment. We need to decriminalize mental health. We need to decriminalize, you know, drug addiction, all of these things. So I, I just want on, on a long tangent about how I think things change. But I think everyone that really understands the bigger problem understands that if we want to fix it, we need to take that whole list of work.
Thank you, Chief. Your work in the department is the embodiment of service in the public interest. Thank you.
Councilman Searcy.
Great. Thank you so much, Chief. I really appreciate all of the work that you and the officers do every day, but also all the work that you put into working to try to make sure that this report provides the level of insight in terms of data to help inform our crime rates as a city. So Ward Six continues to be, unfortunately, the leader in terms of the crime rates in the city. And one of the things that, that you said that I think is really pertinent is about providing opportunities for success. When you have, I grew up in an environment, my immediate family members, including my father, spent the vast majority of my life in prison. So I know all too well how a dumb mistake as, as a, as a 22 year old can set a trajectory for your entire life. So a couple of things, I think you've, you've hit on, you know, some of the social service needs that the community may be able to address, particularly for our residents. But, you know, Ward Six is on the border with Langley Park. How are we working with partners across the border? Because I also recognize the fact that sometimes, you know, crime is important. You know, you have people that are coming across the line, taking advantage. Quite frankly, some of these are crimes of just convenience, you know? People around here like to leave their car doors unlocked. So how are we working to address some of the issues that may be across the borders? Our DC borders or our Prince George's partners?
That's a really good question. And, and the vast majority of people arrested by the Tacoma Park Police Department don't live in the city of Tacoma Park. So that cross border crime is a real problem. We have made it a real, many real efforts to connect with our partners, personally, county police, Metropolitan Police, and the Montgomery County Police Department. Obviously, we are much more focused. We're a smaller agency, and we're allowed to, are able to focus resources on certain issues. But what we really, really try to do, and what we've really been successful at, is coordinating intelligence with the Prince George's County Police Department, with the Metropolitan Police Department, and so on and so forth. I'll give you an recent example. We had, you know, some storefront smashed out in Holy Town recently. We're working directly with the Metropolitan Police Department. They had a similar incident last Thursday that we, I believe are the same suspect. So we're able to share video, we're able to share intelligence. But I think one thing we really, really made, I think, erodes on is that connection between our investigators, between our patrol staff, and being able to, while we're conducting investigations in real time, share lookout photos, in real time, share intelligence, share video, and it solved multiple crimes. And I mentioned the individual that we arrested that was responsible for 15 thefts in our district. He also was responsible for multiple thefts. He also was responsible for multiple thefts in 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 um, in Prince George's County. Our bank robbery suspect that we arrested was arrested by the Metro Transit Police Department. He also committed multiple bank robberies and other jurisdictions. So I I think if we're talking about addressing crime trends, that's how we're doing it. Um, you know, I I will be candid to say that that is difficult sometimes with incidents, especially in Ward Six that are are, I will say lesser uh, crimes, quality of life, like the preachers and so on and so forth. Or we take a more proactive approach and trying to reach out to churches and trying to be proactive to deter them from doing it, and if need be, conduct enforcement. Um, you know, because of the call volume and so on and so forth, the Prince County Police might not be able to be as as proactive. Now, that being said, um, and I think knowledge and relationships are important. You know, I found that out very early on when I was chief of the park. It is so important to have those relationships to be able to pick up the phone, to be able to contact someone, and that's at all levels. That's at the patrol officer level to know who is your adjoining beat officer in Prince George's County. That's at the supervisor level to know who the supervisor is. That's at the commander level to know who the commander of the district is. It's at my level to have those relationships with the police chief in our other jurisdictions. But I will say we're making inroads on that. You know, I I really, you know, I I wish that we would make it a better inroads on the on the nine-one-one issue. Um, as the council knows, um, we here in Montgomery County have gone through a new radio system that I am very pleased with thus far. Um, the old radio system was an antiquated system from the seventies. But that isn't necessarily solving some of the issues with the calls that come from the crossroads or those areas that that, you know, abut other jurisdictions. Even with the text nine-one-one, we're still dealing with the same issue. So that's one of the issues that we're dealing with. Now, you know, the the we're we're working on so people don't get sent to multiple different jurisdictions when that happens. But it's still a work in progress. Um, and I wish that just, I I bottom line is we made some inroads, but there's still work to be done.
Yeah. No, that's really helpful. And I think, you know, one of the things that will be really helpful for um, the public safety um, task force is, you know, this data, but also being able to provide them with uh, that additional context, right? So as we're thinking through not just what these crime stats mean, but perhaps where some of the bad actors may be. And so as we're thinking through, you know, maybe it is thinking about what is it that we need to improve public safety um, within the city, but also what are the programs we want to make sure that we have for our residents? But also keeping in mind that we need to work across borders to make sure that that we're not on it on an island all by ourselves, we do all the right things and still have people come in and and do do some crazy stuff. So I think that's something that's important to keep in mind. Um, and again, I think, you know, making sure that we have um, business outreach and that we're working with the business community um, and trying to get people to report the little things um, is really important, um, because I I do believe that sometimes the little things people don't report, they don't call. Um, but there may be a pattern to those little, those little things that may be important for us to monitor. Um, but again, thank you so much for all of your hard work and um, and providing this report.
Um, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief. First, I'd like to to just compliment the work of the fine officers and staff members you have in your department. They have uh, done a fantastic job again this year, and I really appreciate that. I um, I had just have a couple of questions, you know, we we got this report. I haven't had a chance to look at it in great detail, but on, I had a two questions on page forty-three on the the chart on the CID statistics. Um, first question is, uh, it says cases suspended. There were sixty-three cases suspended. What? What does that mean? What does that column represent?
I mean, I'll, I'll get you an answer directly, but but basically that means that there may, there have been no further evidence. Uh, the complainants might not have, you know, responded uh, to the detectives uh, to the, you know, all all leads were exhausted. Um, but I'll I'll get you a more comprehensive definition, but but that's normally what that that definition means. So so I give you an example. We have, we have someone that reports um, an incident, say, at the hotel on New Hampshire Avenue. Uh, they live in New Hampshire. They report something. Our detectives try to get in touch with them multiple times. They're non-responsive. Uh, we tried multiple means to try to investigate, but we just don't have any witnesses in or leads. Uh, that may be a suspended.
Okay, yeah, because I, as I look at that chart, it says, you know, how many cases are closed and how many suspended? Uh, it doesn't start off with the thing of how many were opened, right? How many, how many cases there were? Uh, but you do mention that the closer percentage is fifty-seven percent. And uh, how comfortable do you feel with that uh, that level of closure?
That that level of closure is much higher than the national average. Um, so I I feel very comfortable. I I'm gonna tell you this. I I think our detectives are some of the best in the area. They are amazing at solving crimes. As I said earlier, they've solved, they've made apprehension in the bank robbery. They solved armed carjackings. Uh, they solved the shooting at the IHOP through some incredible investigative work. So I I would put our detectives up against any other detectives. I just think that they're exceptional. Um, you know, I think our closure rate is higher than most. And understand that when we say we investigate a lot of crimes that other jurisdictions don't even investigate. They would take a report and they would put it in a box. We go above and beyond, not only to investigate, but also to respond to some of these uh, reports that you normally report it over the phone. You call and you take a report over the phone. We're able to go out, we're able to get it more evidence. That's what we're sometimes we're more successful in small in solving is lesser, whether it's vandalism whether it be thefts or so on and so forth. So I I think that's, that's the attention to detail and that investigative work is really important on the front end to solving crimes. Because if you take a report over the phone, you don't go, don't go out to a car to, you know, actually interview the witness and then check for, I mean, interview the victim and check for witnesses. You may miss a critical component. Uh, we're very proactive in getting um, you know, video, uh, cam- cameras, whether whether they're um, whatever type of devices, they are getting that information, getting evidence from from homeowners. So um, and I feel very comfortable with that closure rate. I I think that that that, you know, our detectives are are top-notch. And the thing they they also get top-notch training, and I think that's extremely important. Being a full-service police department, we handle everything from the theft to the homicide. So our our detectives have to be.
Uh, thank you. I did, and you you brought up the um, the cameras. I just uh, wanted to ask, do you have um, you know, some small temporary units that you can use? Uh, if there are hotspots that need to be uh, uh, kind of watched?
Yeah, yes.
Very good. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you very much, Chief DeBalle, um, for the report and the really, really, I think, important discussion that we've had so far tonight. And I had a chance to uh, observe the task force last night and was um, excited about some of the progress and discussions as as that kicks off as well. So I just want to say thank you to you and also to to the officers for your commitment to um, to making sure that we uh, reform and find solutions to address the issues. Um, I just was wondering two, two relatively quick questions. One was building on Councilmember Searcy's question about the interjurisdictional component of things. And I wondered if there's any kind of coordinating body. I I think I may have heard that um, COG, Council of Governments, has like a chief's court, you know, committee or whatever it is with chiefs from around the um, the region. Um, and I also wondered if if not just on policing issues, but also on issues such as mental health um, supports and other supports, if there is some place where people are able to come together to really address these issues across jurisdictional boundaries.
Absolutely. Just to give you some background, uh, the Comma Park Police Department, myself included, is a member of COG, the police departments um, subcommittee. Uh, we meet on a monthly basis. Um, it is very productive. And it's not only police chief from Maryland, but it's Maryland, DC, and Virginia. It's a very productive group, obviously, established a memorandum of understanding for all agencies within that group. Uh, we discuss policy, we discuss mental health outreach. That is a really, really good body for that larger discussion. Now, we also have um, regular meetings between all of our allied partners in Montgomery County. Um, we normally have quarterly meetings where it's much more specific on issues facing Montgomery County. Um, Rockville City, Montgomery County, Park Police, Comma Park, David Burke, Shaw and Chup, all meet on a regular basis. Uh, we met a few weeks ago. It was an extremely productive meeting where we all talked about uh, now the cahoots model that's being designed, we talked about it there at the county level. The cahoots model is a mental health response unit uh, for the entire county. Now, that would impact all agencies within Montgomery County, us included. So I think those conversations are absolutely being held. Um, you know, there's not a a week that goes by that I'm not in contact with one of my police counterparts about certain issues. We're discussing policies, we're discussing what are you gonna do with, you know, moving forward with your mental health outreach. So that policy high-level discussion is absolutely there. I think where the biggest disconnect is that there's so much turnaround is kind of at the mid-level. The sergeant to lieutenant to captain level, is that where you see the most turnover and larger agencies. So, you know, it used to be that if I was a lieutenant on Park Police, you know, I would know the my counterparts on other agencies in the region. So we're trying to bring back that kind of mid-level coordination. But I will say that that the ground troops know each other. If you worked the midnight shift in the Comma Park, you're gonna know who works the midnight shift in Prince George's County. A lot of times that you're backup. You're gonna know who works the the midnight shift in Montgomery, in the Montgomery County Police or Park Police, et cetera. So I think that there's, if there's this this, you know, this this misunderstanding that we do not communicate or we do not you know, especially in Montgomery County, we try to keep consistent policy. So if there's a policy discussion, the vast majority of all of our policies are consistent. Um, you know, we probably have one of the strongest um, law enforcement networks here in Montgomery County, and that's been intact since I'm leading the chief of county police. I was the chief of park police and so on and so forth. So I I think that's that, that's something that we're doing really well at. But I I think that it's it's just um, consistency in 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 our approaches. You know, if if we are de-emphasizing um, you know, low-level marijuana arrests, which we are. Other jurisdictions, if they're not doing the same, there's not the same consistency. So that's something we're working on, but I, but I, you know, feel confident that that with the, with demand for all law enforcement agencies to look at best practices, I think we're gonna see a lot more move up from agencies that might not have been required to be so.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Um, my other question is about the increase in crime that we've seen. And I'm wondering, I know there have been a few sort of higher-profile situations recently that were hate crimes. And I'm wondering if there has been overall an increase or if we just happen to have heard about the ones that have happened a little more in terms of their profile and and where they happen perhaps?
Uh, we haven't seen an increase. Um, you know, we we've had um, a few that reported to the park police, one that was not categorized as a crime at the gazebo. Uh, you know, we 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 had the swastika that that we reported and, you know, the park police had another swastika. You know, they're disturbing incidents. And no matter how many of them happen, you know, they're shocking and disturbing. But we haven't seen an increase. I think what we really see is just an awareness of the smaller things, whether it be the three-percenter license plate that was seen at Nobodas Firehouse or things like that. People are very aware of these symbols now, which they should be. It's good. We don't want people like this in our communities that have those views. We want to do everything we can to make sure that our community is not inciting and doing everything we can to investigate those crimes. Uh, you know, we, you know, we feel very confident that there are, as we said during the, you know, insurrection at the Capitol, Comma Park is not a target. But anytime we have one of these incidents, it just takes away from the the comfort that our residents have because someone amongst us has these views and is spewing this hate. Um, you know, what we need to do is to continue to educate the public. If you see something, please tell us, alert us, so we can go out and check it out. But to answer your original question, we have not seen an increase in hate violence incidents in the city. But obviously, we're keeping a close on it. We're being very, very cautious with these incidents uh, that happen with, you know, salons. It's just absolutely horrible. Um, so it it's something that we are aware of. Um, but I think that it's something that 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 when you talk about something that the task force needs to review, I think it's really important that that is something that we look at. How do we root out this hatred in in our, in our communities? You know, as long as there's one person in the community that feels comfortable doing that, it puts so many other people in a uneasy state.
Thank you very much. I know there are some groups, I I think the one that I'm familiar with is called Not in Our Community. And some groups that are doing work on on hate and trying to um, address it and um, and bring people together and and really call attention to it as well. So thank you very much. I hope maybe we can do more work on that and really address that as we move forward.
Great. Uh, let's see who's next. Councilmember Kovar.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chief. Appreciate all the information and thank you for the good work the department is doing uh, joining with others and saying especially how much we appreciate the diversity in hiring and and really the way the hiring reflects is reflected on the community and also your um, willingness to work with the task force as they, as they get underway. I have a few questions I may send you later. So just, I think, three or four things I wanted to ask you about now, if you don't mind. I know it's getting late. There were a couple of uh, broken windows in some of the businesses in Old Town. And it does seem as if although the overall trends for most crimes are down, I think you mentioned there's a couple of categories li- larceny and so on, car or automobile related crimes that have gone up. And, you know, it's probably tempting to just be able to say, well, it's because we're near another county or the areas where the crime occurs over near DC. I don't want to just blame it on, you know, outside agitators. But um, I'm I'm wondering if, how much of it do you think is just the pandemic and how much of it is other things going on? Given that most of the trend lines are pointing downward.
I think it has a, you can't rule out the pandemic, you know, the impact of the pandemic. Um, it is, you know, a lot of people are really in need. And I think that's, we've arrested some people that you would never think to resort to death by murder or or other theft. I think a lot of these are a result of just opportunity. Try to educate residents so much about not leaving your keys in your car and warming your car up. Not leaving your car open, not leaving car, you know, not leaving valuable visible. Uh, the vast majority of these reported incidents are incidents of opportunity. So if we can continue to educate our residents on crime prevention and so on and so forth, I think it will help. Um, you know, it is, the the trend is not unique to us. Um, increases in crime have happened regionally and naturally. Um, we fortunately, a lot of violent crime has increased in other areas of the country. We haven't seen that, which is which is which is a good thing. We've had some pretty, you know, we've had some bad incidences here, but overall, we haven't seen a a drastic increase. But I think, I think it's really important, um, you know, that that we try to evaluate someone who we're arresting. Because if we're arresting the person that's been arrested fifteen times before for for an auto theft, then maybe it's not really a pandemic. But if we're arresting a twenty-six-year-old who never has been arrested before and we ask him, why is he, why is he stealing from cars and saying, I don't have a job and I can't feed, I can't pay my rent? That's a general indication that it's a pandemic-related issue.
Well, so I'm just real quick, quickly, you know, two of the businesses that were at their windows smashed, you know, they're popular food service places that, you know, are struggling like everybody else to to hang on. Any thoughts on, I mean, is that something where changing patrols can make a difference? Or is it really just those were kind of random incidents?
Anytime we have right incidents of that magnitude, we always increase our our patrol presence. That's just an automatic response. We don't want to be seen as a soft target. Uh, we drastically increase patrol every night hour. That should be, it's something that we would do. Uh, we want to send a clear message to whoever did this, that this is not the place for residents to do that. Now, we can't be everywhere all at the same time, but but at, there's a time that covert response is the right answer. And at the time, that very uniform obvious presence is the right answer. And that's where we are right now with the Old Town.
Okay, that's helpful. Just two other areas. So you talked some about, and I saw statistics in the report on speeding um citations and people going through red lights and stop signs and all those kinds of things. And I do have a big concern about pedestrian safety. And I know you can't literally just park at every stop sign uh because there are too many and there are other things to do and you have limited staffing. But do you have thoughts on that? And and also just to follow up on what Councilmember Seaman said, you know, in terms of the speed limit and so on. Now that, for example, Philadelphia Avenue has added some speed limit reduced, is there a chance we could have a, you know, for some period of time, a some sort of enforcement in area like that? I know it's a state highway, so I'm not sure how that works out.
We what we have throughout the city is we have targeted traffic enforcement, not random traffic enforcement. We have several areas that are problem areas within the city. And we deploy our traffic unit as well as our patrol officer to those areas as much as we can. On a periodic basis, we we send our officers out, we evaluate how many citations are being issued on a given day. That will give us an idea of how how bad the problem is. Um, you know, obviously, the Hampshire Avenue and Philadelphia Avenue is supposed highway. Are are some of our our real problem areas. For me, traffic enforcement should be targeted, not just random. In the past, police departments have just sat at intersections or sat at fishing holes where they knew that it was a downhill trend and they could get somebody with a with a radar gun. That's not what we do. What we do is targeted enforcement for problem areas. And that's what we will continue to do. Um, you know, but I think we also need to look at the design of some of these intersections as well to slow down traffic flow. Um, you know, there's several areas, earlier this evening, we were talking about some traffic coming in certain areas. I think that's important. And once again, it's not just police, it's also public work. It's all of these other organizations that if we can work together, you know, maybe we can create infrastructure that naturally slows down vehicles. Uh, we're looking at the possibility of having red light cameras in the city, which would help out, do a force multiplier. Uh, you know, we went to expanded uh speed cameras on on the, so we're doing the things we can do. Um, but what you what you see, what you'll see in a lot of our 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 reports, uh, when the traffic data comes out, you'll see an overlap of where accidents occur within the city of Tacoma Park and where our traffic enforcement is. And it's almost a direct overlay. It's pretty amazing. But I think that what we need to hear from the community is if when there's a problem area, let us know. While I was on the call tonight, I got an email from an individual about a problem area. If 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 an individual sends this to us, we're not going to ignore it. We're going to deploy resources, we're going to do an assessment. And if it's a continual problem area, we'll continue to deploy these.
And just one last area now. Thank you for that response. Um, you included statistics of the um internal affairs investigations. And I think the positive news is that there's a very, very small percentage of um complaints based on the total number of interactions that the people have with the police. On the other hand, you know, it went up a little bit and um and percentage-wise, substantially in in numerical amount by some number. And what I would like to get, and maybe you could send this separately if 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 you don't have it right at your fingertips now. But what it doesn't really show a lot about is the nature of the complaints and the nature of the specific uh investigations. I know there are limits on what can be shared and how that works and certainly the names of the individuals. But um I'd like to send you a separate list of some questions concerning that. And and if you could share with me what you're able to share, that would be important. Because I think when people look at the list and say, some were investigated, some were dismissed. But, you know, how serious were they and and what were they? And did some people have more than one and things of that nature? I think that's the kind of information that people would like to have a better sense for. And I'm happy to hear what you have to say now. I know that was a fairly general set of questions. But uh can you expand beyond what was in the report, separate from the questions I may submit?
Sure. I I mean, I I will say this, um, we expected the number of complaints from residents to go up. We encourage that. We want people to complain when they feel like they did not get the proper service from our police department. Um, with the national attention to law enforcement, that was just expected. And once again, that's not even for us. Um, as a complaint, we don't discard any complaint. Any complaint that comes in is reviewed and looked at. If there's a legitimate complaint that comes in, we conduct an internal investigation. Now, I I'd like to see specifically what questions you have, because there are limitations to what information we can currently and I say currently, provide to the public. There is a lot of legislation currently being proposed, and it looks like it's going to pass regarding the Maryland Public Information Act, that will open up a lot of that information to the public. Um, so it may be a moot point, because a lot of that's emergency legislation that will take effect July first. So if you send me the the direct questions offline, it'd probably be a better format to answer, because I I just don't know if I could answer anything specifically without knowing the context.
Again, but I think to me, more details, not at this point, you know, maybe maybe something will change if these if these state laws do pass. But for now, I'm not looking for someone's name, but just more information on the nature of the of the allegations and so on. But I but I will follow up with you on that. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, man.
Thanks. Uh, Councilman DeBala.
Yes, thank you, Chief. All what everybody else said. I so appreciate having you here. And I so appreciate the department we have now and just so you know. Um, and thank you for your efforts at the state level to make some change. I I that hasn't been mentioned yet tonight. And I really appreciate that. Um, I had a couple of more specific questions. On the report in particular, on page fifteen, um, there's non, what is it called? Non, um, non-part-one reports. And if you, and I noticed that the top couple are property administration fraud and M D O P. And I'm not sure I quite understand what those are. Um, so just quickly, uh, what are they?
Um, the fraud offenses are are, you know, someone tries to deceive you on over the phone or giving somebody.
Okay, right, yeah, yeah.
The M D O T O, the M D O P, it's late and I'll have to get back on with you on that. And I don't want to give misinformation. And the property admin, I think I know it is, but I I can email you off-line with specifics on that.
Okay, yeah. One one reason I keyed in on this was because this just goes to the breadth of things that you you and your department have to deal with, you know, from major crimes to all of these kinds of things. Um, and they are important to folks. I wanted to um follow up a little bit on this um question of of patrol flexibility to be where you need to be when you need to be there. And I think that's great. I have had some residents with this increase in in larcenies and auto thefts uh comment that they haven't seen a police officer on their block in a long time. I think that's a good thing personally, because it says to me, you're somewhere else where you need to be. But um is that something that the that the task force will be looking into? Is the 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 kind and nature, the nature and um and 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 kind of interactions that police have with residents that are not particularly related to an incident? Um, or is that something that that you feel that you've been working on or both?
I mean, I I think what the task force is going to take a look at is what types of calls for service that the police department currently responds to, should be re responding to. And more and most specifically, mental health calls, homelessness, you know, other issues that can be better handled by, in my opinion, by mental health professionals or other other agents not in the police. So I I think they'll absolutely look at 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 certain calls for services that aren't, that are currently being handled by the police. I mean, we get calls from everything from, um, you know, disputes between a mom and a daughter because the daughter won't give her the remote, you know, and they, it it's just, you know, some of it is just, you know, they embellish what it is and that's what it turns out. You know, a a dispute between a mom and thirteen-year-old and it ends up the dispute is, the thirteen-year-old wouldn't give the mom the remote. Um, if I didn't give my mom the remote, she wouldn't call the police. I can say that. It wouldn't have gone well. She got the remote anytime she wanted. Um, but to answer your question, I I think that 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 it's 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 important that, you know, the community needs to decide what they want. I I would say if there have been a massive theft, you know, rash of thefts from autos in a community, you want to have the police there. Now, you might not always see the police, because a lot of times we deploy our plainclothes units to situations like that, so we can catch the offender. Uh, when when Peter mentioned earlier the incident up in Old Town, that is an, that is a a situation where you want to have proactive, targeted uh uniform and and enforcement, so people do not come there. But theft from autos, we want to catch those people. They're most likely they're responsible for other theft from auto. So, you know, the community needs to decide what that balance is. Uh, do they want the police presence for a deterrent? Do they not want the police presence? Ideally, there's so many communities within Tacoma Park that see very little police presence. Um, a lot of communities in Ward One, because they just don't have a lot of incidents. Um, you know, and we deploy our resources where the problems are. We don't want to create problems, we want to solve problems. Uh, we're now proactively, you know, stopping people for no reason, photographing people for no reason. Everything we do as far as enforcement is targeted and for a reason. Um, so I I think that that to answer your question, absolutely. I think the task force is going to have to review what is the best service delivery for certain calls. Um, what does the community want to see? Do they want to have the police presence to deter the thefts? Or, I mean, there there's got to be something in place. Do they want to have more um video surveillance? Um, you know, we could get camera trailers and place them throughout the community, which would give us the intelligence and that force multiplier. But those are expensive. And does the community want to sacrifice that privacy for the lack of options? So it's a bigger conversation, but I absolutely think it's something that the task force needs to pick up. But I think it's very important, if any of the community members are listening, to let the task force know and let you all know what they want. Um, yeah, this is a community-driven task force with a lot of really qualified people on it. But it's only going to be as successful as input from other people that are not on the task force.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think I think there's a a number of people in in Ward Two who have still got a very um conventional model of policing and like to see the visible uniform. And I I that's an issue for the community and for the task force for sure. That helped a lot. Thanks. Um, my last question has to do with the
I think it's very important that when the uniform police presence is there, they're respectful. If the uniform police presence is there and they're not respectful, you won't want them. If the uniform president is there and respectful of all people, then you'll want them. So that's where we need to come into play is when we have the police officers there to treat people with respect, to treat people with dignity, not looking down on them, so they want to have, they feel comfortable with police rather than feel like police are the oppressors or the warriors.
Thank you. I was going to ask about the ABLE project, but I'm just realizing how late it is. So um it, do you want to say anything briefly about it? Because I thought that was just such a great thing and I wanted to see how it's going so far.
Uh, absolutely. I'm extremely excited about the active bystander for law enforcement uh training that all of our officers are going to go through. Um, Kristi Lopez, who's on the chief's advisory board and works at the uh North County University, is also a DOJ expert, is one of the coordinators. The act, I'll be real quick, but the active bystander for law enforcement program uh teaches officers how to intervene when other officers are misbehaving. It teaches officers, um, you know, the right behavior, the right way to intervene, what is right, what is wrong. So we're really excited about that. Our officers have gone through the training, the training. What we're going to do now is bring that back, that training to all of our officers. But we're always looking for state-of-the-art training, whether it be active bystanders, uh, you know, the ABLE program, whether it be, um, you know, you know, crisis intervention training for all of our officers. One of the things that we really do well, I think, and if it's exhibited in in the training that we provided, is offering training to our staff and them taking advantage of it. So I'm very excited about their program. We're one of the, uh, you know, some of the first agencies in the country to do that. So we port back on on this successfully.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great. Well, thank you, Chief, so much for um your presentation tonight and um your continued work with the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force and I'm looking forward to um meeting some of the newer officers that um we have. You know, COVID nineteen has made it a lot more difficult for us to get some of the, get to know some of the new officers. So hopefully soon, um, we'll be able to uh get to meet them in person. So um, thank you for all the the work you're doing. Um, and I think we're, that's, we're good for tonight. And it's still night, so it's before midnight.
I'm warning you.
Thank you.
Did you say we could all go home?
No, we're supposed to do committees.
I'm going.
You're going, too. Um, we have uh Councilwoman DeBala, C R C and Kostic to uh update us on the work on committees.
Do we have a power?
Yeah, so I think uh Councilmember C R C is going to put the slides and we're just going to buzz through this really, really quickly. Um, first, Councilmember Kostic.
It's me. If you can go to the next slide. All right, so we are going to hopefully go through this relatively quickly. We just have some updates um on uh kind of where we are in the work we've been doing on the um committee review and looking at what we want to what the structure we want to have in the future. Um, so tonight, we're just recapping steps the council must take to have a new committee process in place uh by the end of June. We are recapping the general purpose and common charge for standing committees and recapping revised criteria for prioritizing the need for specific standing committees. And then um we'll have just a brief update on applying criteria to quasi judicial committees and reaching out to staff and others. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so council committee work group recommendations. Again, we looked at this previously. This was the information that we received in terms of the recommendations from the group that was working uh previously uh with staff and council members and committees. Um, these were to establish a common structure, to clarify leadership roles, to review the purpose of committees, to improve committee operations, develop tools and establish a new appointment process. And tonight, we are looking at, again, still the purpose and charge of committees. We still have a lot of work to do, but I think a lot of it will fall into place as we really do this foundational work and have a good structure to build on. So I will turn it over to, I don't recall if it's Councilmember DeBala or C R C.
It's me. Um, so we just want to uh again, refresh the court charge we talked about. The uh for standing committees that we talked about last time. Um, and then to show you in the next slide how we have um incorporated the comments we got on the on the cra- on the factors, the criteria for reviewing standing committees. So um just to refresh, provide the council with tangible recommendations in key priority areas or fulfill a regulatory function. Um, leverage residents' technical expertise and lived experiences. So to utilizing the the expertise and experience of residents, um, ensuring that the council has regular and timely information from the group and creating an opportunity to engage residents on issues that they see as important and enable residents to um assisting community and education, community education and engagement activities in their areas. So that's what we saw as, no matter if it's uh trees or elections or anything else, these are, this is what we we think we want to see. Um, next slide, please. Um, so we had proposed that we would go through, starting with the quasi judicial uh groups, uh, looking at these factors to prioritize amongst the many standing committees we now have. Um, and we had, last time, we had
Um, and we had, last time, we had three primary characters and three secondary. So we've added one, and we've moved one over to the primary list. Um, and we have, uh, in the first one, uh, as I said, work that supports the council's priorities or continuing structural or regulatory purpose. Um, second one, uh, we made a modification. We had best, and we've changed it to well. The issue is well addressed by a standing committee. A standing committee is a good format for dealing with that issue. Many other ways to deal with an issue and engage residents. Um, third one, ongoing attention needed on the issue, not a short-term issue you can hit with the task force. Um, the one that we moved over, uh, based on comments we got from all of you, is staff capacity to support the committee. That's a key factor that we see. Um, the secondary, and this, the next set of questions that you asked about committee, the secondary factors, um, is there a need to get the technical expertise and the lived ex, and or the lived experience from residents on this issue? Um, is the issue relevant and important to to residents? Do they see the need for it? Um, and last, the the new one, uh, based on our discussions last time, is can an, uh, can some other existing entity do this function, handle this work? Um, so that that leads us to, next slide, please. Um, assuming that we are all in agreement on those, having talked about it a couple of times, we've, this, our subgroup has started applying that these factors to the different quasi-judicial committees, boards and commissions. There are eight. Um, and we have started, we we had a couple of meetings with city staff that work with these groups to get their feedback, get their input on the factors that we just outlined. Um, and we have, uh, been reaching out to committee members, um, particularly in groups where we have some concerns based on the factors to see, to see what, uh, what they think. So we started that process so that we can, at our next meeting, come back to you with a, with recommendations on these. So just to refresh you, the the eight that have this structural function of, or regulatory function, if you will, the Board of Elections, uh, Landlord Tenant Commission, the Ethics Commission, Facade Board, Noise Board, Personal Appeals Board, Police Pension Board, Entry Commission. And and you all should have received a table that lists them with their membership and so forth across the top and a little blurb about their current, their purpose and code. Um, and that will be what we were trying to talk about next time. Um, so, uh, Councilmember C R C will wrap up.
All right, cool. So as, um, Councilmembers Kostick and DeBala has, um, said, we have a lot of work ahead. So if everyone's okay with the, um, the charge language as well as the criteria, um, the next, uh, step is to, um, review. So take a look at, um, starting with the quasi-judicial, um, committees, um, using the factors that Councilmember DeBala just discussed, review and decide on individual committees and charges. Um, approve the recommended committee structure and exceptions. So again, that relates to, um, number of members, um, term limits, those kinds of things. Um, as well as establish, um, member selection and as well as any aspects of diversity that we may want to work into specifically as a release to things we want to work into into any code language. Um, and then that goes to the next point, um, code changes and administrative functions. So that'll happen in April, early May. Um, and so it really will rely on us to work a lot with, um, staff um, in terms of coming up with approaches for application, training of committees, as well as, um, reporting mechanisms for things such as, um, some of the um, codes of conduct that we've already approved and things of that nature. Um, and then also, we as a council will need to approve code changes that reflect the discussions um, from the first step that we're engaging in right now, which is the charges and the committee structure. Um, and then, you know, the next piece will be about making sure that we have a recruitment strategy um, to make sure, you know, that we're not only, um, people are understanding what our committees are designed to do, given what we talked about in terms of the first two steps, but also that we're able to get the necessary, um, diversity. And that may require, um, budget considerations as well. So those are some things that we want to keep in mind, and the idea is that we would do that in May. Um, and then new member appointments, our hope is that that will, um, start, um, in late June. Sure. All right. Um, so, um, as Councilmember DeBala has already mentioned, um, we are reviewing the quasi-judicial committees and charges. Um, we have been consulting and have met with staff, um, to get their thoughts. Um, we also have started some, um, aspects of outreach to committee members as well. And so they've been sending us feedback. Um, and so our hope is to kind of take all of that into, um, consideration and bring back to you all our recommendations on approaches for the quasi-judicial committees specifically. Um, and then our hope is that you all will help us with making a decision on, you know, the level of alterations that we may need to make to the code or, um, to charges based on our initial assessment. Um, and then we can start discussions on, um, recommended committee structure. So, you know, again, in terms of the number of folks that we want, um, term limits, things of that nature. Um, and then, um, return to the rest of the individual committees and their charges. So again, we're prioritizing the quasi-judicial start. There are a few others that are not quasi-judicial. So our hope is that once we get through the quasi-judicial, everyone will have dusted off the cobwebs a little bit and will know what we're doing. And then it'll, we can more easily apply the factors that, um, Councilmember DeBala discussed to the other individual committees. Um, so that was a really quick summary of where we are and what we've been doing. Um, and we will pause to see if anyone has any, any questions or comments. And Mayor, I apologize, we are two minutes over midnight, and I know that you tried very hard to get it.
No, this is good. This is awesome. Um, thank you for that update. Uh, very much appreciate all the work you are doing on that. Um, I don't think, I I personally, I'm I'm looking to see if anyone else's hand is up, um, at this point. Um, I like the changes I that you all made to the the criteria. And, you know, I think it'll be, once you start applying them, um, we'll see if they work. But, you know, I I think they they look good, and I I continue, uh, to agree with the the purpose statements that we've been working with. So, um, from my perspective, it looks, looks good. Kind of like, anyone else on council have any comments or thoughts? I see, uh, Councilmember Siemens is shaking his head no. I can't see anybody else. Ah, there's everybody else. Um, great. I I think it looks good. Um, if if you guys have a chance to just circulate the PowerPoint whenever, um, then I think we can, um, people can take a fresh look at it, but, um, looks great to me. So, oh, anyone need anything else? I think we're done. I think we're toast.
I was going to say my bed.
I know. I think we are all done for the evening. Um, thank you, everyone. We will close it out. Thank you for a great meeting tonight, uh, a lot accomplished. Um, and, uh, yeah, we'll be back again next Wednesday. All right. Have a good night.